Can you make sure, I'll make an announcement now the public is in, please make sure your video is off. All right. I call this meeting to order of the city council for the city of Gross Point Park. Clerk Blayhut, please call the roll.
Councilmember Rayland.
Present.
Reed.
Here.
McConnell.
Here.
Hodges.
Here.
Robson.
Here.
Fluit.
Here.
And Mayor Denner.
Here. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before we get into our agenda, I wanted to just ask for a brief moment of silence to recognize that the Gross Points lost a terrific public servant and longtime elected official in Mayor Bob Nowicki in Gross Point Woods. His passing is very sad for a lot of us that knew him pretty well and is particularly difficult, I know, for the people of Gross Point Woods because he served them so well for so very long. So please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you. Move on with the approval of consent agenda. You have the consent agenda before you. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Some support. There is support. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rayland.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Hodges.
Yes.
Robson.
Yes.
Fluit.
Yes.
And Mayor Denner.
Yes, motion passes. Now we'll move on to approval of the regular agenda. Do I have a motion, a motion to approve?
Move.
Support.
Support.
We see no discussion. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rayland.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Hodges.
Yes.
Robson.
Yes.
Fluit.
Yes.
And Mayor Denner.
Yes, motion passes. Our next item on the agenda is approval of March 8th meeting minutes. Normally, the approval of the minutes is in our consent agenda. Councilmember Fluit asked that it be pulled out of the consent agenda because she has a recommended edits to the minutes. And so I will open discussion on the, I suppose what I'll first do is ask for a motion to approve and then we'll have discussion and possible amendment to make it formal. Sir, a motion to approve?
So moved.
Sir, support?
Support.
Okay, discussion. I believe Councilmember Fluit will have something to share with us.
The only issue I had was on page two under public comment agenda items. There should be an additional sentence in there that Councilmember Fluit read into the record. A letter for public comment received from State Senator Adam Ollier.
Okay.
And that was, that was the only change that I had.
Okay. Do you move that we amend the minutes with that?
I do.
Is there support for that amendment?
Or.
Or.
Any discussion on that proposed amendment? Okay, call the roll.
Councilmember Rayland.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Hodges.
Yes.
Robson.
Yes.
Fluit.
Yes.
And Mayor Denner.
Yes, motion passes on the amendment. Now we'll go back to the original motion, the approval of minutes as amended. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rayland.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Hodges.
Yes.
Robson.
Yes.
Fluit.
Yes.
And Mayor Denner.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Next, we have public comment on agenda items. Ask the administration to manage this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Denner. So I do have one written public comment that I will read, then I'll turn it over to Leah Smith for the rest of the spoken comment. This comment comes from Mr. Greg Donnelly. Dear Council, I comment today on one particular agenda item. Item 11-2 regarding zoning appeals for specific residential properties. Why are some projects required to go through this process but others are not? It seems like a very inconsistent interpretation of policy that the city's administration could better administer. Specifically, was there ever such a hearing for the proposed art center? In addition, regarding the same agenda item, I want to first express my general support for the kind of dense and urban infill development that is proposed as four residential units at 1475 through 1481 Wayburn. The west end of Gross Point Park is already quite dense and walkable and is encouraging to see development that is not overly suburban being proposed. That being said, why has this not first been reviewed by the planning commission? Also, that particular street does have an alley and many of the current homes on the street access their garages from the alley. This development proposes four new driveways in a relatively short distance. All the garages that are at the front of the homes instead of behind homes, as is more in keeping with the neighborhood's character. Should this developer be encouraged to have the garages access from the alley and or behind the new homes? Mayor Denner, that's the written public comment, and I'll turn it over to Leah.
And thank you, City Managers Sizeland. Mayor Denner and City Managers Sizeland, I have no one in the queue for public comment.
Okay, thank you. That closes public comment on the agenda items. Some of what came up in the written public comment will be clarified when we get to that agenda item that was referenced. So next, we move on to the manager's report. I'll turn it over to the city manager again, Mr. Sizeland.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Denner. So before you tonight, council is a overview of the administration update. One thing I would like to bring to attention is I did receive notification from some residents that there was a survey that came out over the weekend regarding Gross Point Park. I just wanted to clarify that that is not associated with the city of Gross Point Park and that is some other entity that is doing that. On regards to COVID event, last week on Tuesday and Wednesday.
City Manager, can I interrupt you briefly? I just wanted to remind the public to please make sure your video is off. Thank you. Please continue, City Manager.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Denner. So last week, the Gross Point communities in Wayne County hosted a two-day COVID-19 vaccination. In total, we administered over 1,400 vaccinations. Specifically, I'd like to thank the Wayne County Department of Health and Human Services, Dr. Jennifer Floyd, County Commissioner Tim Colleen for bringing this event to the Gross Points, paramedics from MedStar Ambulance and the Gross Point Public Safety Department, some pharmacists from Beacon Pharmacy for assisting administering the vaccine, Pat and Ray Latham for providing means of transportation to and from the event, and the many volunteers in support of city councils who ensured the event ran seamlessly and for your support and volunteerism. Special thanks to Gross Point Woods Recreation Supervisor Nikki Gerhart, who served as the lead coordinator for volunteers working with our park staff. Without all these entities, this could not have been possible, and so I wanted to thank them all for a very smooth event where we administered the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. Communicator update, Parks just wrapped up today. A final touch is on the communicator. Highlights include city projects, including the DPW master plan, new employee highlight, beautification awards, park announcements, business highlights, and more. We're looking at about a week and a half before they start arriving at residents' doors. Tifa COVID support, the Tifa Board, which I'll touch on later as well, approved a round three of COVID support funding for a total of $75,000, which will allow businesses to apply for a maximum $6,000. In comparison to the last two, we're up to $5,000. New items such as payment for barrier materials from sidewalks and streets, plexiglass, UV sanitizing lighting, air purification upgrades, PPE and marketing expenses, et cetera. We continue to look for other means of allowable expenses within rules of the state law. Businesses that have applied already are still eligible for this grant. However, those who have not applied before will receive first priority. DDA, the new DDA grant, has a total fund of $20,000 and it expanded its eligibility for businesses to include showing financial distress is an easier way for businesses to apply for funding. Currently, we have two applications in review right now in our offices. DTE came back today to finish restoration and meter work on Kirchville in Gross Point Park. Part of the work that they'll be doing, especially in restoration, is more over in the west end of the park right now. So with that, we've sent out notices to residents and put out on the city website asking all residents to be aware if they know parking signs and crews because they'll be quite busy with construction equipment while they're on site completing the work. DT will work one block at a time to minimize disruption. City is asking residents to please use parking lots in the areas, including city lots and other means to get off of the street. We apologize for the inconvenience at this time. Tickets are not going to be issued during the construction and parking lots only. If you have questions or concerns about the project or in general, please contact DPW Supervisor Pat Thomas or Assistant Supervisor Tom Jenny. DT will be in the city as well touching up other areas of the city for restoration that need additional work that are besides the west end of the park. And they're posting, we're posting a schedule right now, including the blocks that DT will be working on that is featured on our city website. DT at this time expects early summer completion. As you may know, that this is the third year that DT is vetting Gross Point Park. Regards to the Public Works Building, architect contractor working on permits with the county, so boring test to start soon, fencing around the site to take place towards the end of the month or early May. And at a future council meeting, we'll bring for your review and approval, consideration to vacate portions of the alley in Wayburn and the lease of the DPW building. City Hall Building, our architect Spicer Group is working with bidders on adding additional considerations to its bid. Right now, we're looking at over $1.2 million for the roof and windows of City Hall, which will be brought forth for council to approve and consider the low bid. Next steps after that, we'll be looking at HVAC, ceiling, and lighting upgrades. Master Plan update, MKSK closed the survey. We've had over 1,000 responses to the survey posted on Master Plan. Talking with the consultant and others in the industry, that is huge, so kudos to Gross Point Park for their activism. On April 27th, the city and MKSK will be holding community open houses that will take place on the back patio or indoors, depending on weather, at the Tompkins Center from 11:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. and later in the day from 5:30 to 7:30. As part of that community open house, you're going to see a summary of the survey results, continue to give feedback and ask questions about the master plan update. And again, we'll have necessary precautions due to COVID-19 with social distancing, masks are required at the event, and hope to see you all there. An update regarding the Public Safety Director position, so I'll give a brief overview of that. The position closed on February 22nd. We received 14 applications. EMOCO conducted interviews on March 31st with all candidates. From the 14, four were selected for final interviews. Before this interview takes place, an independent third-party investigator is in review of their backgrounds, employment, history, and et cetera with all four candidates and should have their information completed to the city by the end of this week for review. Afterwards, a final interview will be conducted by myself, the Public Safety Director, and the City Manager, Police Commissioner. And so based upon the recommendation from the city attorney, I can provide the following information about said candidates. We have a diverse applicant pool and four exceptional candidates. Candidate one has 36 years of experience and received their education at the University of Oklahoma with a master's in administrative leadership and a bachelor's degree in criminal justice with honors at Eastern Michigan University. And they completed the FBI Academy in Homeland Security Certified and Incident Command Systems and NIMS. Candidate two has 22 years of experience and received their education from Northwestern University School of Police Staff and Command and a bachelor's degree from EMU in Political Science. They also completed School Craft Fire Academy in 2002 and they're certified in FEMA NIMS 1 and 2 Incident Command. Candidate three has 37 years of experience and received their education from Mercy College of Detroit with an associate's and bachelor's in law enforcement corrections and a master from the University of Phoenix in organizational management and currently enrolled as a graduate student at the University of Michigan Dearborn with an expected completion in December 2021, and they are certified in ICS. Candidate four has 24 years of experience and received their education from Wayne State with a bachelor's of Applied Science Concentration Law Enforcement and currently enrolled in a master's program in leadership with an expected completion in 2022. And they completed the MSU School of Staff and Command in 2015. After the review of the third-party investigator and coordinating, I expect to have a hire within the next, probably in about two weeks. Last update, Drinking Water Revolving Fund. The city is working with its engineers, OHM advisors, to looking into a program to update our water mains, lead service lines, and meters. OHM is in review and comment on our application to provide for further application scoring if we move forward with the project. Research is continuing before presentation to the Public Services Committee and a review and possible approval and consideration by city council. Mayor Denner, that is my update.
All right, council, do you have any questions for the city manager? Councilmember Hodges.
Thank you, Mayor Denner. First, relative to the selection of a replacement for our Department of Public Safety head, I would just like to salute our city manager for developing a process that reflects our community of today and that will stand to inform his decision effectively. I also like to wish Lieutenant Bostock and all candidates well. I'm not sure if Lieutenant Bostock is even in the pool, but no matter what the outcome, certainly grateful to him for his dedication and commitment and leadership during this interim period. And then regarding the 2021-22 budget process, as the city council member for finance, just want to remind everybody how important that management tool is. It guides and directs all that we do and prevents scope creep, so I'm looking forward to working with Finance Director Blayhut, who we know we are in good hands with, to make sure we're managing all of our pension liabilities and other obligations and effectively directing resources towards important priorities like the marina and other public infrastructure. And I just want to take a minute to remind everybody to be sure to do their homework and to be ready for a clean process, including our DDA and Tifa, which have obligations in advance of that final budget approval that will ensure we are in compliance. And if anybody's looking to becoming more familiar with the budget process from a municipal standpoint, I'd refer you to the Citizens Research Council, which does a lot of great work on a very nonpartisan way. So thank you to the administration and certainly let us know how we can support you. And then just lastly, ever mindful of important priorities like Tremblay. I understand the pre-K program has been successful and is expected to continue, which is good news. And further, at past meetings, it's been reported that the SCOP Center leadership team was working toward a permanent solution, City Manager Sizeland. So at some point, it would be nice to get a report on that to see what kind of progress has been made.
Counselor, okay, is that it, Councilmember Hodges?
Yes.
Some of those items were probably best done in council comment with new business. So next meeting, consider parsing that between the manager's report and that topic. Any other questions for the city manager? Councilmember Reed.
Thank you, Mayor Denner. Just a couple of questions on the DTE. City Manager Sizeland, you said this is the third year. Is this the last year for the DTE project?
That is correct.
Okay, and yay. I think most residents are happy about that. And one question is on the sidewalk restoration. Is there an ability for residents to add, add to the project on their property if they have additional sidewalk repairs they want to have done? I know we've had, we've had that type of program in the past. Is that something they're offering?
I would have to double check. I do know, for example, last year, there were a couple cases where neighbors had kind of gotten together, had approached the city to talk with the contractor, and depending upon contractor availability and being there at the time, they were willing to work with those residents.
So if that, if those questions arise, should we have them contact the DPW Director, Pat Thomas?
I would, and I would certainly encourage if there's a couple neighbors all together because it's easier for the contractor to work on, you know, a specific area. I certainly think that would make it a better process and allow for those residents to be able to work with. I believe it's, I forget the name of the cement contractor, but they were very flexible last year.
Major.
Major.
You're correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor Protem Robson.
Thank you, Mayor. Question for the city manager. I know it's right through the finance reports, the expenditure on the implicit bias training that we have for the Public Safety Department. Just want to know, how many officers went through that training?
All officers went through the training.
All the officers went through it?
All officers at dispatch.
That's great. That's good to hear. I commend you and I.
And command staff.
And command staff too. I commend you and I commend interim director Bostock as well. Thank you very much.
Okay, I saw another hand. Councilmember McConnell. Oh, you seem to be muted.
Yes, trying to have a try. Today is technical difficulty day, apparently. So one, I wanted to say, I did think that the vaccination process went very well. It was great to be involved with that, and so kudos to everyone who took part in that. But at the same time, because our numbers are going up, I wanted to know if there's any consideration about this in-person event that we're talking about. Do we, you know, just something to noodle over. Do we still want to try to have in person in light of the spike? On the communicator, I know we had discussed possible ways to have, to support local businesses. Is the, is there any update on that? And then are you at least going to talk about the Tifa and DDA funding in that communicator? Can we even do that? I don't know if there's any prohibition, but it seems like we should promote that so that we make sure that everybody knows about it.
Yes, oh, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead. I.
So I don't want. So I don't want to reveal too much because, you know, there's some good reading in this communicator, but I can say certainly that there is a plug for Tifa and DDA for those businesses to consider as well as to support our local businesses, as well as a little bit information about COVID-19, asking residents to, you know, please mask up and, you know, be social distanced. And in regards to the event, yeah, certainly, depending upon, you know, COVID-19 numbers, that's certainly something we're looking at every day. And depending upon what that may be, we may have to make some changes regarding the master plan event.
Okay, thank you for that. And then you mentioned the Public Services Committee, so I would love to see if we could get a date on the calendar for the Public Service Committee, since we haven't met yet, so.
You'll hear from me on that as soon as the administration's ready to support that meeting.
All right, I'm excited to participate, as you well know, so.
Yes.
And then, I think that's all I have on my questions. I'm sorry.
All right, that sounds good. Councilmember Rowan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. City Manager, I was wondering, has the communicator gone to press? Is it closed? Are all the, no more articles are going to be able to be submitted? It's finalized?
It has gone, it has gone to press, Councilmember Rayland.
Okay, thank you. I was just wondering if city council could have received some of the articles you're sending out about city updates prior to it getting to press, so we can all agree on everything that's, that's been spread to the community. But thank you for that, for getting the communicator out. I know how important it is for everybody, so we all appreciate that. And then for including beautification, we really wanted to be a part of that. You mentioned that DT is going to have a, oh, go ahead, go ahead, Nick.
Yeah, so one thing, you know, this is definitely a shortened version of the communicator, but certainly, let's, let's talk. And, you know, I know there's a couple ideas council had for future articles. So certainly, I'm welcome to hearing those ideas. Absolutely. So let's, let's talk further.
When, when is the next issue coming out?
So we would probably look to have a summer issue. I would have to talk with Mr. Chad Craig and Mary Beth Hathaway. I am missing the exact month, but we'll have a summer edition.
Okay, okay. We'll be, we'll be well aware of that, I'm sure. So I appreciate that. You mentioned DT is going to have a schedule. Is it going to be by street and tentative date for when DT will come back to the street? Each, each home street?
That's correct. So what they, so what they did is if you go on our city website under the announcement regarding the DT notice, you'll see each street, and they tried to do block by block with the addresses. So they'll have a expected start date and an expected completion date. Obviously, there's, you know, some wiggle room depending upon weather, but they did a nicer job of being able to try and give residents some time of when they're going to be in the area rather than before, we kind of never knew, except they're going to be on Wayburn. So I commend DT for working with us a little more.
Yeah, that's, that's very important. I know the residents are going to appreciate that, so I want to say thank you. The COVID vaccine, that is awesome. It's very important. Working at a hospital, our hospital is full. So we are going through a surge that's worse than it was at the end of last year, like the end of October and November, which we saw. So I know our hospital is pretty scared. Just reminding everyone to stay safe as they can. And I appreciate your updates on the Department of Public Safety Director search as well, so thank you.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Do we have any more? Councilmember Fluit, one more, and we'll be, we'll move on.
I also wanted to echo that I was really excited about the vaccine event. I know a lot of people worked very hard on that and you couldn't possibly name all of them, but it was very successful and I think that was great. I'm really glad we were able to do that. I wanted to reiterate again, the master plan engagement session. I'm worried about COVID as well. I just calculated, we've had 20% of our total cases in the park have been in the last 30 days. So I'm, I'm a little worried about that aspect of that event, but all the same, just to reiterate to our residents, there is going to be another opportunity for public engagement on April 27th. So I'm excited about that. I hope people will be able to participate. The only question I had was on the Drinking Water Fund. I'm also looking forward to having a committee meeting about this because it's such a huge project. It's a very, very important infrastructure project, and I know it's going to be a big job, but it has to get done. Is that Drinking Water Fund something that can potentially fund the entire cost of this project? That's, I just wanted some clarification on that.
Yeah, absolutely. So it depends upon how many applicants the state receives and the amount that each project costs. So there could be, for example, let's say that a council does approve of this project and it's received to the state, and they might say, well, city of Gross Point Park, we only have funding for about half, so we'll be able to provide you half the funding for this project year and then reapply the following year to be able to try and get the other aspects of the project. You know, one thing that's very important that we're trying to do is when we do consider this, is minimize as much disruption as possible. So we're certainly crossing our fingers that we could, you know, hit an area and do all at once rather than piecemealing and having to do upon, you know, project, project, project. So at this point, it's kind of, you know, depending on council, consideration, approval, and how many people apply to the state.
And are we still waiting or are we still getting bids for how much that entire project is going to cost?
Yes, so we're going, OHM advisors is going through that process right now. We're trying to look at scoring. That's really important to the state, depending upon, you know, the higher the score, the better you are for getting full funding. So they are in the process of both of those right now, and that's something that will be brought forth for your review and consideration of what that total project cost will be.
Okay, thank you.
On the point of the state's revolving fund, it might be appropriate, City Manager, to clarify that this is a revolving fund, not a grant fund. So therefore, ultimately, money will be repaid. But this is, so it's really a financing tool as much as it is anything else. It allows you to accomplish the project more quickly, I think. City Manager, you might want to comment on that.
Yes, so Mayor Denner, you are correct. This is a loan, more so than a grant. And so depending upon what council wants to consider and review, this would be something that we would have to consider, a cost to each resident in regards to probably their water bills. And certainly, we hope that we can provide some funding as well. I do note, and probably you all have seen, the federal government did pass a bill that, with infrastructure, that is coming to the city, and we're waiting upon treasury guidelines into where we can spend that money. And so hopefully, that could be something we consider to helping to lessen the blow a little bit.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's move on. Thank you. Okay, thank you. All right, let's move on. Thank you. Thank you for the manager's report. It was a good discussion, good questions. Thank you. Let's move on to committee and commission reports. We'll start with commissions and boards, which have a little bit different status actually than committees and other assignments. So we'll start with commissions and boards. First one up that I'm aware of is beautification. I'll ask Councilmember Rowland to comment on that. I suspect you'll have a.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have, just, just a slight thing. We have, let me find my notes here. We have the Arbor Day poster contest going on right now, and Pat Deck delivered the posters to all the fourth graders at Mayor and at Defer. Those will get, I think we're looking for a deadline of Monday, the 19th, where we will be judging those on the 22nd. We're having, trying to have a safe meeting where we can lay the posters out to judge them in person. We'll see if that stays poss- possible with, with what's going on in the government. If you did not receive a poster and your fourth grader is still interested, you can reach out to me and I'll give you Pat's information to get a poster. I can get it for you myself. We have the GPP Plant Exchange on May 8th at Wilma Point Park. Details are on our website. And then our next meetings are going to be on April 22nd, which will probably be a closed meeting because we'll be judging, and then May 12th will be an open meeting. That's all we have for beautification.
Okay, thank you. We'll be getting to some beautification related things in the next agenda item as well. Next commission is up is Recreation Commission. There are actually two meetings, meetings, one a subcommittee and one a regular meeting. I'll ask Councilmember Reed to report out.
Thank you, Mayor Denner. Yes, the Marina Subcommittee met on March 10th. The, that committee continues to review the Marina's financials with administration. The Marina Supervisors also having an overall engineering assessment of the Marina, which will allow the committee and ultimately city administration to be strategic in planning Marina repairs, maintenance, and upgrades. I understand that assessment will probably be completed by the end of the month. Repairs and upgrades for this year so far included painting well numbers on each wells and rub rare, rub rail repairs, which are ongoing. The committee is actually meeting tomorrow night, April 13th at 7:00 PM via Zoom, so any interested, anyone interested in the Marina and what's going on should join. And then the Recreation Commission held a special meeting on March 25th. The sole agenda item was to review the proposed dog park rules. The commission discussed and offered revisions to the rules proposed by the Parks and Recs Director. He's incorporating those changes in the final rules. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Recreation Commission is on May 5th at 7:00 PM. And that will also, I assume, be by Zoom as we're still under the Wayne County emergency order. And that's it for the Recreation Commission.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to the Tifa Board, and I'll ask the, the city manager, who's also the Tifa Director, Mr. Seizlin, to give us a brief report.
Thank you, Mayor Denner. So I touched on a couple of points already, but there was a public works facility update to the Tifa Board, COVID-19 Grant Program, update and review regarding round two and how well that worked. Round three guidelines, review and approval, and a approval of a budget reallocation. Regarding new and old business, there is a discussion regarding the parking study summary that was done by a subcommittee of the Tifa as well. There is a discussion about the parking lot in regards to behind Point Hardware. There's been some concern regarding the look of that parking lot. And so this is something I've engaged with OHM Advisors in looking to making that a formal parking lot with screening and looking at to, for actual spots instead of gravel. Discussion, you know, we need to look at meters and in regards to a timing of our parking meters. And there was a discussion by the Tifa Board for a consideration to knock down a proposed home over at Maryland. And so that was the Tifa meeting at its close.
Okay, thank you. Let's go on to committees and other organizations. Really, we have primarily our council representatives that are active in, in the various organizations, I think, ready to report out. The MML, Michigan Municipal League, did have their Capitol Conference, and I'll ask Councilmember Fluit to give us a, a summary of the Capitol Conference.
Thanks. Yes, so I am the MML representative, and in the time that I've been on council, I've never yet been able to attend anything in person. So this Capitol Conference was March 16th and 17th. I went to several presentations, but I think the one that I really wanted to highlight was the one about what we'll be able to do with that federal funding for COVID when we receive it. I took a lot of screen, or yeah, screenshots actually on that because they did an excellent job. Their presentations are, are excellent, and they did a really good job of breaking down what we can spend that money on. We can spend it on COVID-related expenses. We can help out our businesses with that, with their COVID losses. And then, as the city manager said, we can also use it for infrastructure improvements. So should we choose to, to use it for our lead pipe replacement program, we are able to, to use that money for that as well. As I said, I'm not going to go into all the details right now, obviously, but they did, they did an excellent breakdown of what the funds could be used for. They can't be used for pension funds. But I have those notes if the city manager needs those, if those would be helpful. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is just the Sustainability Committee did not meet, but we do have a meeting on Wednesday, the 14th.
Okay, thank you. Just making a note. Okay, let's move on to SEMCOG. Councilman Reed is representative to SEMCOG, and there was SEMCOG General Assembly. I'll ask Councilman Reed to report out on.
Yes, thank you. Like Councilmember Fluit, I have not attended a live session at the SEMCOG General Assembly. I have of MML, and I agree, those are, they're excellent resources and excellent presentations. The SEMCOG General Assembly met virtually on March 18th. Just for, really, for those who don't know, maybe in the attendance, the SEMCOG is the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments. It supports local planning through technical data and intergovernmental resources. They work to improve the region's water quality, transportation system, and help revitalize communities and spur economic development. The, the General Assembly, this, this year, there were pre-meeting workshops that were quite interesting. They offered industry and stakeholder response to increased shared prosperity, as well as the government response to implementing increased shared prosperity. The workshops were informative and insightful, and I'm happy to share the meeting materials with anyone who's interested on council or anyone in the public. I would also invite you all to spend some time on the SEMCOG website. There are some great resources there, in particular data that's useful, broken down by community as well as forecasting. Following the pre-meeting workshops, the General Assembly included the election of officers, approval of the economic development strategy, and approval of SEMCOG's 2021, 22 budget and work program summary. And most of that information is available on their website if you would like additional details, but I won't bore you with all of them now.
Okay, thank you. Good report. The Eastside Community Network, which is a, an organization dedicated to redevelopment and our neighboring, with our neighbors immediately to the north and west, focuses primarily on Mac Avenue these days. Councilmember Hodges is a representative to ECN, and I'll ask for a report out on their meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Denner. As you said, ECN's been doing community and economic development on the east side for 35 years, and they do have responsibility for overseeing the Mac Avenue Strategy Committee, which is comprised of representatives from the City of Detroit, each of the gross points touching Mac Avenue, Wayne County, and others. The purpose of that group is to further and advance a healthy Mac Avenue by working collaboratively. And key initiatives and discussion items from the March and April monthly meetings include these. First, there's a corridor-wide coordination of zoning effort underway. The City of Gross Point is leading that. It will bleed over into other jurisdictions eventually, including our own. For those that are interested in learning more, there are public sessions that have occurred, the next of which will be next Monday at the Gross Point, City of Gross Point Planning Commission slash City Council meeting. There's also a website, macavplan.com. Proposed changes in this draft include shifts in allowable uses, design standards, and parking requirements. And for anybody that finds that boring and jargony, I'll say think childcare, brew pubs, distilleries, and live work units to pique your interest. Another item of discussion is a proposal for streetscape planning and improvements along the corridor. It has a large price tag. Our state and federal elected officials are helping to identify funding sources. Thirdly, there's a corridor improvement authority tool that's being considered to help sustain these initiatives long term. And there's an associated financial analysis going on to determine its revenue producing potential. There's also been a consultant hired to assist with marketing and branding. The next meeting of the Mac Avenue Beautification Committee is set for April 26th at 6:00, and they're looking for simple to implement ideas along the corridor, so have your thinking caps on. Similarly, there's an annual meeting of the ECN and the Mac Avenue Business Association on April 22nd at 6:00 PM. I also took the opportunity to update them on our master planning process, the status of our DPW building, the four-unit townhouse project that's up for consideration this evening, and also the fact that during this Black Restaurant, Own Restaurant Week in Detroit, that one of our very own Gross Point Park-owned restaurants, Bayo Bob Fair, will be participating in that effort. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I've got one more. Our interim chief, Bostock, has been participating with the Gross Point Harper Woods NAACP in their meetings, and I believe he has a report out on their recent meeting. Lieutenant.
Thank you, Mayor Denner. The March NAACP Gross Point Harper Woods meeting, the topic was police response to mental and behavioral health events. The group discussed the increasing need for public safety and our response to mental health and behavioral events. We discussed the need for training of first responders and not only the recognition of, of those that might be in crisis, but also, you know, what can we do to give our officers the proper tools to safely handle that situation? So that discussion pretty much revolved around that, and then, you know, there, we're discussing what possible topics will be in the May webinar that is going to be open to the public. So, and that's, that's my report.
Okay, thank you. That closes the committee and commission reports. I don't think I missed any. So move on to unfinished business council comment. Does council have any comment related to unfinished business? We don't have anything on the agenda in that category, but it's a standard item on the agenda. I won't feel offended if we don't have any, and we'll come back to that later. Okay, we'll move on then. Past unfinished business to new business, where the first one, first item on the agenda is the Arbor Week Resolution. Council had this in their, in their package. This is something that the City of Gross Point Park does every year, recognizes Arbor Week, and we try to have a number of things related to it. Councilmember Rowland mentioned the poster contest that beautification leads. And also, I think it's important to recognize that Gross Point Park, once again, was named a 2020 Tree City USA, which is an indication of how important trees are to our, to our city. We have an unbroken record of that for, for decades now, I believe. And then importantly, one that's even harder to get, though, is Tree City USA Growth Award, which is an indication that we're not only maintaining, but we're trying to grow our urban forest. And I'd like to congratulate the administration and our forester, Brian Coulter, for that. But the, the item on the agenda is the, is a proclamation recognizing Arbor Week. I will read the proposed proclamation and ask for a motion for approval. City of Gross Point Park proclamation and recognition of Arbor Week. Whereas Mayor Denner, City Council, and members of the Beautification Commission have established the day of April 30th, 2021, as Arbor Day. And whereas the Beautification Commission and recognition of Arbor Day has established an Arbor Day poster contest for area fourth grade students. And whereas the purpose of the awards is to promote community awareness and involvement in Arbor Day by the students, as well as an appreciation of the many benefits of trees, now therefore, be it so resolved that Mayor Denner, City Council, and members of the Beautification Commission hereby recognize the day of April 30th, 2021, as Arbor Day.
So is this mine, not yours? Is that right?
Do I have a motion to approve this proclamation?
So moved.
Is there support? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rayland?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Padgett?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
Fluit?
Yes.
And Mayor Denner?
Yes, motion passes. Arbor Day is, we have somebody who, in the public, who's not on mute that I, I believe. Anyway, so motion passes. We, we have established Arbor Day. I, I think that's, this is something that council and everybody in the city can be proud of, and that's the, the city's record as in stewardship for our urban forest. We, we do an exceptional job, and I think it's really important, not only for the appearance of our city, but also for the environment. So kudos to all involved. The next item of business is the, is under Zoning Board of Appeals. So now I will suspend the council meeting and, and ask that the, the council will now convene as the Zoning Board of Appeals. Today, we have two variances, two, two variance requests to consider. We will take these in turn. As council knows, but relevant to a previous comment, the Zoning Board of Appeals acts on variances that are requested by, by developers and homeowners who have projects that that in order to be completed the way they want to complete them, require a variance from our zoning. So the Building Department, the city administration, reviews the application for building permits. If the need for a variance is identified, they're, they inform the, the person responsible for the project, and they can choose to either alter their project or request a variance. There's a formal process for submitting that. So what we have before you are, are two requests that the Zoning Board of Appeals is set to review this evening. The first one relates to 1475-77 and 1481 Wayburn, and I'll ask the administration to introduce it. City Manager?
Okay, yes. Thank you, Mayor Denner. Mr. Ron Supel, Chief Building Officials with us tonight. And I would ask that Mr. Supel provide a summary report that's in the council packet tonight.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Seizlin. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Mayor Denner and ZBA, this is regarding 1475-77 and 1481 Wayburn. And GSR Properties LLC wishes to erect a new four-unit dwelling on the vacant parcels of 1475-1477 and 1481 Wayburn. The building will be a new two-story building unit with attached garages and 1,385 square feet of living space each. The new four-unit building will not meet the City of Gross Point Parking zoning requirements, Article X Schedule of Regulations RD, which requires a side yard setback of seven feet, six inches on each side. The new building will have a nine-foot setback, which meets the one side, and a zero-foot setback on the opposite side. The zero setback side borders the rear setback side of the Huntington Bank located at 3180 Alter Road, Detroit, Michigan.
Ron, you just went away. I wonder if you muted or if someone muted.
No, I'm, 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 I'm here.
Oh, okay. Continue, sorry.
So, so basically, is what the applicant is looking for is a zero setback on the one side of the. is a zero setback on the one side of the property line, which borders the Huntington Bank side, which is basically, um, a retention, uh, retention pond on the other side of the, uh, property line. And currently, there is a fence that, uh, runs along that retention pond and the, uh, property line.
Okay, thank you. A couple, a couple of comments for me, and then we'll, I'll ask the petitioner, if they're available. Ron, were you done? I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm done, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Supal. The, uh, as a multi-unit development, uh, according to our, uh, our ordinances, this requires, uh, even if did not require variance, uh, requires site approval, uh, by the, uh, and plan approval by the planning commission. So in this case, there is a variance required. And so there's really, uh, two steps in the process, uh, for this project to go forward. One is the zoning board of appeals to approve the variance request, which is for the zero setback on the, uh, on the one, uh, property line that is adjacent to Huntington. And the other step is, uh, review by, uh, the planning commission for their approval of the plans, where they may, uh, address, uh, details of the design or the, uh, or, or the plan, uh, beyond the, uh, the variance request. So I wanted to make that clear, that there really are two steps here. Uh, with that, um, if the petitioner is present, and can be, uh, introduced and present their, uh, their case, is petitioner present?
Uh, yes. Uh, thank you, Mayor Denner. I'm gonna ask Leah Smith to assist me here. Um, but I do have, um, the architect, Mr. George Bailey, that should be online, and the builder, uh, or builder, Mr. Dave Bonjero, or the, um, applicant, Mr. Richard Inger. I see it looks like David is here. David, could you please unmute yourself?
Yes.
Okay, and is, uh, Mr. Bailey and Mr. Inger available with you?
Uh, they should be joining momentarily.
Yeah, I'm here.
I see Mr. Bailey.
George Bailey, George Bailey's here, yep.
Okay, is, uh, Mr. Inger gonna be available?
Yes, Rich Inger's present as well.
Okay, all right, uh, Mayor, we have the, uh, applicants here.
Okay, I'll, I'll let you, uh, the applicants have the floor. I'm not sure which one of you would like to, to, uh, address us, but, uh, I'd like to hear from the applicants on the, uh, on the variance request.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, my name is George Bailey. I'm the architect on the project. We are, um, obviously, as, as Mr. Supal kind of delineated, we are, we are looking to, uh, we have designed a, a project that is a four unit townhouse development, uh, with, uh, it's a two-story, two, two-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, uh, um, unit, four of them, uh, with attached garages. Um, and, um, so we are, are looking to, you know, as, uh, as was, uh, mentioned before, to help, uh, you know, infill, uh, this lot that has been vacant for a number of years and, or unused, and, um, you know, create the, a little bit more density on the block and in the, in the neighborhood. And, you know, relate to, relate to our neighbors, you know, both the, the, the commercial side on Mac and then on the, uh, on the neighborhood side, you know, through use of, uh, you know, materials, um, you know, that are, are similar in, in, in both aspects, um, scalable, uh, you know, elements of the building, uh, with porches and balconies, and, you know, the window sizes and doors and things like that, the openings of the building are scaled to the, to the neighborhood size. Um, and then, you know, just trying to, you know, create that, again, a little bit more density in the neighborhood, create a little walkable access, um, to both the neighborhood side and to the, and to the commercial side on Mac. And, um, I guess, uh, to address the, the variance piece of it, um, we are, again, as Mr. Supal, uh, told us, the, the northern end of the property, uh, abuts the, uh, Huntington, Huntington Bank property. Uh, the actual physical structure is about a hundred and forty feet away from the property line. Um, so we're not, uh, encumbering there, um, to that, to that neighbor, uh, side. It is a, uh, retention pond on the north side. And then, um, so in order to, to give us, uh, or give our neighbor to the south a little bit more, uh, room, we'd like to, that's why we're trying to push as far north as possible to that property line edge, so that we give our immediate neighbor, uh, where the structure is closer to us, to give it, give it as much room as we possibly can.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else from, uh, from your team? Any, uh, Mr. Bonjero or Bonjero or Mr. Inger, any comments that you'd like to share?
I think George pretty much summed it up, Mayor. That, that's pretty much it.
Okay, very good, thank you. I'm not aware of any, um, written, uh, comments on this from, uh, from neighbors. City manager, we, none were in our package. City manager, did we receive any written comments that should be passed along or read to us? Oh, I think you're, you're muted, uh, city manager.
Uh, yes, Mayor Denner, we did not receive any written comments, uh, for the time, um, that was put in the, uh, packets, but I believe there could end up being some spoken comments.
Okay, I think we should probably hear from, uh, anyone that's in, in the queue, uh, that would like to make a verbal comment on this, on this project. Use the raise hand function and, uh, the, uh, the assistant to the city manager will, uh, will, will call on you and, and bring you and give you the floor.
Um, thank you, Mayor Denner. So the first person in the queue is, um, Matthew. So I'm just going to ask you to unmute yourself, and please state your name and your address. Go ahead.
Hi, everyone. This is Matthew Babrick. I am at fourteen seventy-three Wayburn, which is the house immediately adjacent to this project. And, um, I just had, I wasn't able to get my questions in in time. I, I just misread the, the document. But, um, I was just curious, um, you know, th- this is a pretty large building, and we're on a very small bungalow. We've, you know, done a lot of work to the house, putting in a new driveway, a new roof, and we just want to preserve the value of it. And we're happy to hear that there's, um, you know, the variance is asking for the other side, not the side towards our house. And we were just wondering if, um, I could see some elevations of the side. Um, right now, there, it's pretty sparse to see if landscaping there would be or fences and so forth, because, um, I'm just, I'm concerned about looking out our window of one of the bedrooms and just seeing a monolithic black wall above us. So if I could use some extra, uh, views or elevations of that, I would really appreciate it. And wondering, you know, what steps are being taken to preserve, you know, the, the residents on that side of the, the project?
Okay, I think that's probably, if there is, uh, we'll make this relatively informal, uh, if the, uh, Mr. Bailey or, or one of your cohorts would like to comment on, uh, what, on that particular side of the, uh, structure. Now, recognize too, that, uh, some of these comments that we're, that we may be getting into here, uh, will have less to do with the variance request itself and more to do with the site plan approval, um, that will come before the planning commission. And this is probably one of those comments, uh, that we could defer to the, uh, planning commission discussion. But if, uh, the petitioner would like to comment on it, uh, here as well, uh, I'll give them the opportunity.
Ma- Mayor Denner, could I just make a real quick comment?
Yes.
But both of those specific questions, just so it is clear, elevation and landscaping are specifically delineated as items to come before the planning commission. So not that we can't have a discussion here, but those have to be presented to the planning commission, um, formally for that side of the approval as well. I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Thank you. Yeah, that's consistent with my understanding as well. So, uh, petitioner can choose to defer it to the planning commission discussion, or if they want to make a comment now, that's fine. It's not specifically relevant to the variance, uh, question at hand.
George, do you wanna, just, you wanna discuss what type?
Well, I mean, just, right, and, 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 you know, certainly, we were, you know, when we're, the presentation comes before the planning commission, we will be, uh, you know, have, you know, further detail with, uh, what that, what that elevation's gonna look like. We've got some, uh, this is, we're in preliminary, uh, preliminary design sort of phase right now, and, and we've got a general, uh, idea what that wants to look like on that, on that southern side. Um, and I'm trying to be as, we're trying to be as in a, you know, try to, try to not be as, um, like, in your face as far as, like, protrusions, things like that. So it's, it would be a, uh, you know, the openings would be sparser on that side, so.
Okay, I will, we'll defer the rest of that to the, uh, to the planning commission. Uh, next, uh, any other comment, uh, city, assistant, uh, city manager?
Um, yes, so Mr. Porter is next, so I'm just going to ask you to unmute yourself. Please state your full name and address, and go ahead.
Hi, my name is Ron Porter, seven eighty-one Pemberton. Uh, I obviously don't live in the immediate neighborhood, but, uh, to me, I would urge the council to approve this variance, uh, as quickly as you can. We have a developer here who wants to build, uh, modern, uh, multifamily housing in a multifamily housing neighborhood. There's a lot of people who do not like living in a hundred-year-old flats. I don't happen to be one of them. I've lived in two flats that were about a hundred years old. But there are a lot of people that don't, and so we've got a no-brainer here. We've got people who want to invest in our community, bring in residents, and the only, uh, issue here is, uh, building a, uh, encroachment, uh, on the, at the bank's lot line, and the bank doesn't care. So, to me, there's no issue. It should be approved immediately and unanimously.
Okay, thank you. A, a dog chimed in on that.
Yeah, and my dog agrees.
Okay. Leah, do we have, uh, other comments? Thank you.
Yes, I have, um, one more, so it's phone number ending in seven zero zero three. So I'm just gonna ask you to unmute yourself, which should be star six on your keypad. And then if you can just, yes, and then if you can just please state your full name and your address, go ahead.
Yes, my name is Amy Reno. We are at fourteen sixty-three, uh, Wayburn. Um, sorry, I did not hear if, uh, when that planning commission meeting was taking place. Um, we are not against, a lot, like a lot of the residents on this block are not against, um, people developing and moving in. Uh, we too welcome it. Um, but I just want to make sure that we're part of, um, the serious parking issue that a lot of the residents here are concerned about, um, especially with the new DPW, um, building going up and the loss of the parking at the end of the street. Um, and, and just the design of it itself is a little troublesome. Um, so I would just like to know when to participate or how to go about, um, making our issues with the residents of this block known. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if we've got a scheduled date for the planning commission yet, but I would, uh, encourage, uh, you and other residents, uh, to, uh, send your comments to the, uh, to the planning commission by email, uh, copy to the, uh, city manager.
Mayor Denner, that planning commission meeting will be hosted on April twenty first.
April twenty first. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Leah, is that the last, last comment?
Um, yes, Mayor Denner, I have no further comment at this time.
Okay, thank you. For my part, I'm looking forward to the, to the planning commission discussion on some of the design details, but I think as it relates to the, uh, to the, uh, specific item before, before me, I'll make a, I'll make a couple of comments and then have, have council chime in as they wish. I'm excited that we've got a developer that's, uh, interested in doing, uh, this kind of a development, uh, in, in the neighborhood. The, uh, uh, neighborhood density, I think, is actually good in this part of our town. And I think that, uh, from a variance standpoint, the, uh, developer, I think, was, uh, was very, um, very careful to, uh, uh, try to give the, uh, immediate residential neighbor as much space as possible and still, uh, support the multifamily, uh, development. And I agree that the side that, uh, that is, uh, being asked for, for the, uh, for the variance, uh, really does not encroach on any use, beneficial use of our, of that neighbor's property, that being the bank. And, uh, as, as was pointed out, uh, because that's so far from other things that the bank has going on, and is in fact, as Mr. Supal pointed out, uh, part of their stormwater management is nearby there. Um, I don't, uh, I don't see any issue with the, uh, with the, uh, zero setback. So I am, um, uh, leaning toward, uh, approval of this, uh, this variance, but I'd like to hear of council weigh in as well. Council member Reed?
I'm on. Thank you, Mayor Denner. Um, I too am, um, happy to see a developer interested in developing vacant properties for residential use. I've spoken with some of the neighbors, including Ms. Reno. I was over there, um, for quite a while on Saturday, uh, looking at the site. Um, and the neighbors are generally in favor of adding residential property. But I want this to be a successful development and a positive addition to the neighborhood and the city. Um, so I have a couple of concerns, not so much with the variance, but with our process and the materials that we have. Um, one of them is there's no context plan, so I can't see, based on what we have, how this development fits in with the DPW and the adjacent properties. We do get from, um, we do get a little bit of a view of the house next door. But without, um, the overall context, it's hard to envision this. Uh, one, uh, one concern that the neighbors expressed, and this, this goes, a lot of this goes beyond the variance, but it's about our process, which should come first, whether the planning commission site approval should come first, um, with the neighbor input or this process. Um, the neighbors are concerned with loss of public parking. They, um, with the four garages facing Wayburn, they're giving up public parking that's on the street. And what I understand from that particular block, um, parking is a premium. The neighbors on the west side of Wayburn do not have alley access. I think that's a sent, well, part of it we vacated, I know, for the bank, but I, I think it's just basically overgrowth. So it's really tight for those in the neighborhood. And then also, um, I am, you know, and this was expressed to me by the neighbors, is how the, it's a very modern-looking structure, something you might see in midtown or in some other urban settings. And if you, um, spend some time on the street, it's mostly, um, there's some two-story flats, but a lot of one and a half story or small two-story, um, bungalow-type homes that are a hundred years old. So, um, I, I do favor this type of development. I think that's great. I would like to see it fit in with the neighborhood. Uh, so I think some of the other issues are more, um, philosophical, and that's, and I had a great discussion with our city manager on this today. I think it illustrates, um, the need to update our zoning ordinances on things like curb cuts. And also just our overall process in terms of approving these type of development plans and what are, um, we don't have within our zoning ordinances right now, um, an architectural integrity or architectural standards. So that's, you know, without that, the neighbors are, are at the whim of, uh, the planning commission approving it, and then it meets our zoning ordinances. I think they're almost obligated to approve it, especially if, um, we clear the variance. Um, so I am inclined to grant the variance. I want to be clear about that. I would prefer a public hearing on the site plan with the neighbors' input and some work toward incorporating, because I think they're, they're doing two things. They're, they're creating a, um, modern structure that will be visible from Mac and may fit in with the bank and the DPW building, but it's also part of a hundred-year-old neighborhood, and, um, so how does it fit in there? So, um, those are my comments. Like I said, I'm inclined to grant the variance. I would like to, to reverse the process. I know the planning commission cannot grant a variance. That's up to the zoning board of appeals. But I think they could do a, um, site plan approval contingent on, um, the zoning board of approve, uh, of appeals approving the variance. And I'd like to hear what others have to say, because I think this is a which came first kind of discussion. But I am very cognizant of the concerns the neighbor had, the neighbors expressed to me, and parking is one of the big ones.
Yeah, that's, your, your, your question about sequence, uh, either sequence is, would have been, is acceptable. We can certainly, uh, choose, if we choose to approve the variance, choose it with, uh, with conditions, and that condition being the, uh, the, the hearing that you described in the planning commission, uh, action. So, um, just like the planning commission could have done the site plan and approved it conditional on, on the zoning board of appeals granting the variance. So, uh, either of those approaches are, uh, acceptable based on my conversations with the city attorney. Uh, other members of council that we should, I'd like to hear you weigh in. Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, one question, uh, for the
Thank you, Mayor. One question for the developer. How many feet is there between fourteen seventy-three Wayburn on the south side and the, this proposed structure?
Nine feet. It's on the, it's on the site plan there. It's at, we're at nine feet is what the proposal states.
It's nine feet to the lot line is the, does a neighbor, is a neighbor right on the lot line?
I don't believe so. No, I believe, I believe it's like a five, at least five feet. I'm not sure.
I think they're three feet, guys. I think it's like three feet. It's pretty close.
So twelve feet between the two structures, I guess, is what you're saying, about twelve feet?
Plus or minus, yeah.
Plus or minus. Okay, thank you. As one of the callers said, in terms of the variance request, it is something of a no brainer, doesn't affect another residential dwelling. It's the Huntington Bank property. The bank itself is two hundred feet away. It's all parking lots, so that's should not be a problem at all. I don't think they complain. Councilmember Reed brings up some good points. I have to digest the architecture myself, but in the big picture, it seems exciting and I think it will definitely boost the neighborhood. Good point about the parking, but on the other side, if you didn't have those driveways, the occupants would have to park out in the street anyway. So I guess that's a wash. But I will be looking forward to the planning commission meeting as well, see what happens there. Thank you.
Okay, other, other council, councilmember fluid.
Thanks. I, I had written down a couple of things, one of which you already answered, which is, you know, why this specifically needed to come to the planning commission. I understand the variance, but if it's a multifamily unit, that's why, that's why we're, we're seeing this, or that's why planning is seeing it. I also, when I first got the packet and saw the, the design of the building, my first thought was that's, that's exactly the kind of thing I would want to move into when I'm ready to downsize. I like the size of it. I like that it's modern and it's brand new and all of that. And then my second thought was, but it doesn't fit into the park. So I, I also have some concerns about the design. And I would agree that maybe we need to have that discussion later on about, are we going to have some architectural standards for this type of thing? I think the, the density of housing and, you know, the, the smaller size of the units are great. I think we need some of these options in the park, so that's very exciting. But I also think that it should have gone to planning commission first. If we are the board of appeals, then to me, by definition, that means it's coming to us after the preliminary approval. And so, you know, why, why are we choosing to do it this way, rather than have it go through the planning commission first?
Councilmember Fluid, I can answer that probably better than anybody. The, the two are not contingent upon each other, but they're both required. And so the zoning board of appeals, nothing from the planning commission is getting appealed up to the zoning board. Variances go directly to the zoning board of appeals for approval. And then based on our, our zoning ordinance, the planning commission is required, because you, as you noted, it's a special use. And so for that process, as a multifamily special use, items like site plan approval, landscaping and elevation need to be approved separately. So either way, whether you started here and went to planning, you have to check both boxes. It doesn't really matter what order you're checking them in. And while I think this discussion is very good, even based on state law, things like architectural design aren't really factors in the variance decision. So your decision as a ZBA is sort of distinct from the decision of the planning commission, but both are absolutely required. So whether they start there and have that discussion and then come here, from a legal standpoint, either is, is fine, but both are required separately. They're not really intermingled. They're two separate approvals.
I suspect the sequence was because of the, of the meetings that were already on the calendar, that the developer was, was prepared to, to advance the project, was anxious to advance the project. We happen to have a council meeting coming up, and I just checked the calendar. The, the planning commission meeting that city manager referenced has been on the books for a while as well. So I think it's probably just a result of the way the calendar fell when the developer was ready. But we can, we can choose to do what we want as a zoning board of appeals. Other, other comments from council. Councilmember McConnell.
Good evening. I wanted to sort of echo what's been said. I, I think I've mentioned before that I spoke a few months ago to an arm of the Gross Point Board of Realtors. And what they mentioned at the time was that, you know, we need to have developments that address people aging in place. We also heard that in the master planning process. And we need to have housing that accommodates younger folks who may not require as much space. So I think potentially this speaks to those issues that were raised by the Gross Point Board of Realtors, so I'm excited about that. I do have some, some, a couple of questions. One is, there are two adjacent lots to the north between the development and DPW. I just wanted to clarify the ownership of that, what the plans are for that. And then separately, it's always good to know more about the people who are engaged in the process. So if the developers wouldn't mind just giving a little, a little bio about who you are and what kind of things you've done. Thank you.
For clarity on the, I think all the property that's being proposed for, for this development is owned by the developer. And it includes what you described, I think, as an existing vacant lot. I don't believe there are any other vacant lots immediately adjacent to this property.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think the city website shows two lots north. We're, we're hearing there's a retention pond. Is that retention pond already there?
Oh, that could be part of what was already, I'm, oh, I see what you're saying. That, that's probably part of what went to the Huntington Bank site.
Okay, so the city website's just out of date on that, then. Those are, those were gifted to Huntington Bank?
Well, the, the plot plan, the plot plan is kind of forever. The ownership is now Huntington Bank. As part of the, part of their, if they're the ones that, if they're the ones that I, that I believe you're referring to.
Yeah, they're the ones that's butted up to the zero foot line. I think, and I speak, I don't want to speak for you, councilmember. Is that what you're thinking as well? Those same two lots that, that I see on the web?
I'm not, I think those would be the commercial ones, though. I think we're going to have to defer that, that discussion. There's, on the, on the north side, the, the development would immediately abut the Huntington Beach, or the Huntington, the Huntington Bank owned property. And on the, on the, immediately to the south, what we've now learned is about twelve feet away would be the structure of the adjacent residential home. And then across the street, there are, there are properties in existence. There is one, across the street, there is one buffer lot that is being preserved as part of the DPW site plan between the DPW yard and the adjacent residential. Those are, I think, the only vacant properties in the, they can, I think that's the only vacant property in the immediate area.
Thanks for clarifying that. And then I just, is it possible to just get a little more detail about the folks who are doing the project?
Okay, I'll leave that up to the petitioners.
Good eve, good evening, everybody. My name's Rich Inger. I'm representing GSR Properties. I'll let Dave Bongero speak after me. He's, he's here on behalf of actually constructing this project. And he can give all his background. But just a second, Mayor Danner's response regarding that lot. I believe, like, like Mayor said, it's the lot across from us to the north is owned by the city, from my knowledge. I'm not sure what they're doing. If, if that's the lot everyone's referring to, I think that's owned actually by the city of Gross Point Park. I don't know of any other vacant lot that's in my area. As far as GSR Properties goes, I'm, I've been a resident of Gross Point Shores or, or since, let's see, I bought in two thousand eight. I've, I lived in Gross Point Shores prior to that, my family. So I've been a resident for almost twenty years. I've been in the real estate development business for roughly fifteen years, buying and selling real estate, lots of remodels, lots of new construction. And Dave Bongero, our main builder, has been with us pretty much from day one. Our office is on MAC. My partner has been in the business, who also is a Gross Point Farms resident for almost forty years. Gary Shegash, he's also part of this development venture. We're, we're highly invested into Gross Point, and we're excited about the project. The reason we're here tonight for ZBA is because that's how the meeting fell. Plus, to be honest, at the end of the day, like, without the variance, obviously, we can't do anything else. So we wanted to make sure we had some kind of support with the neighbors and council and ZBA board before we jumped into the next project, as far as the, the planning review. And more than happy to, to do that as well on April twenty first. Obviously, we're, we're, we're almost ready for that. We have everything ready to go. But it was just the way the meeting fell today with ZBA, just how, how everything worked out. But hopefully, everyone's on board. We're excited about it. There's definitely a need for what we're building, as stated earlier by, by council members. And we look forward to get, getting started as soon as possible. Thanks for having me tonight. Dave, if you want to give a little bit of a background on, on, on your,
Sure.
Would be great.
Yeah, sure. Hello, ladies and gentlemen. But my name's Dave Bongero with Bongero Construction. We were, my dad established our company in nineteen seventy-two. We incorporated nineteen eighty. We are a full service building and renovation company, both commercial and residential sectors. As Mr. Inger told you, we've been doing work for Rich for fifteen years. When I say literally hundreds of jobs, it's, that's like, that's taking it lightly. We literally have done several hundred projects, both residential and commercial, doing a commercial job for him now down in Eastern Market. Lot, we have done a lot of new residential building and a lot of extensive renovations, both in the commercial and residential end. We are based out of Livonia, and we have twenty-five employees. And we're self-managed, and we do a lot of the work in-house. Of course, we sell about a lot of it, but we're, we're pretty much self-sufficient. That's pretty much it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just from my end, I'm, I'm, I'm a sole proprietor here. I'm, I'm based in Gross Point Woods. I am, I've been a licensed architect for over twenty years in residential, commercial and all, all sorts of facets and things. And so I'm also highly involved, like you guys are, I'm the, I'm the chair of the planning commission here in the woods as well. So I understand this process and the importance of it as well. So I'm looking forward to, to moving forward.
Okay, thank you. That was, that actually was very helpful, I think, to me, as well as, as, as others to gain more insight into the development team. So appreciate that. Anything else from council before we do some, do the formal stuff? I think we're good for the moment. What I'd suggest we do, do is put, put a motion on the, I'm sorry, councilmember Reed.
Uh, councilmember Rellen has his hand up.
Oh, I missed it. I am sorry. Councilmember Rellen, I apologize. I didn't see it.
Thank you. I just have a few quick questions. So Mr. Inger stated that there is a lot next to this zero, zero lot line that the city owns.
No, across the street.
I thought he said there's one abut, abutting it as well. Mr. Inger, are you still online?
Yes. No, what I was referring to is the lot that's across the street from us. That's the only lot that I know that's vacant outside of what we own.
Awesome, awesome. Okay. And then just some small questions. Does the height fit? I don't see a height elevation on these. Does that fit into our ordinances? I see it as three plus stories of building, so I'm not sure what our height ordinances are.
We are, we are just under the, under the, the ordinance requirements.
Okay. And I'm sure you would, you would make sure you're under that. But that, just to, just for, as we get to planning commission, that's going to be an important site, standing right, right next to a residential house. And I'm super excited about this, too. I think building multifamily housing is something we've been asking for, and it's very important in our city. So thank you for bringing this up. Just some personal thoughts here. Are they rental or are they for purchase?
Well, with, with the market conditions currently, like, you know, obviously, by the time we get a shovel on the ground, it's twelve, fourteen month on the, on the, on the end of construction, our plan is to sell.
Okay.
If the market, our plan is to sell. If, if the market conditions change, which is very possible, we will have the ability on a, on a financial end to rent if we need to. Association will be set up for that as well. But our plan is to pre-sell all four units before we even, really before we even start building.
Wonderful. Good luck with that. That sounds great. And then just one question on our process. Why didn't the zoning concerns of the art center come to us first? I'm wondering from city manager.
I can probably comment on that as well, because I've been studying this process. The zoning board of appeals acts on variances. And as a result of the administration's review and the planning commission's decisions, no variances were required. So it never came before the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, even with the blurred lines, we, we wouldn't need to get involved.
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, just a couple more questions. One is, will the developer, will the team have a, a context plan available at the planning commission meeting? So those in attendance can visualize how this is going to look in the neighborhood from the Wayburn side and from the MAC side? Is that something that you can provide?
Just, if I could, I, I would answer yes, but if you could clarify what, by, by what you're describing, are you talking about a, just a, an overview site plan kind of thing, with a larger site plan view of the, the street and the neighboring properties? Or what are you referring to?
And that, yes, there's that. And then maybe you could work with the city to also incorporate our planned DPW, which is, hasn't been constructed yet, so that, so that the planning commission and the residents, in particular of the neighborhood, can see what the whole area is going to look like when your project's built, when the DPW's built. Is that something that you put together?
I believe, yeah, absolutely. I believe you guys were engaged with Stucky Vitale, correct?
Yeah.
John Vitale's on the planning commission with me. I can reach out to him and, and get some resources from him to, to combine our efforts to, to put something like that together for you guys.
Okay, two more questions. Is the team amenable to adjusting the, the plan, whether it's the construction materials or parking, based on the planning commission input and what, and the residents input? Because, I mean, my, one of my, I guess, concerns is I want the neighbors to buy into your project. So is, do you have room to make those adjustments at, based on a planning commission meeting?
I can speak on, on this, George. Good evening, councilmember Reed. So, I mean, we're always concerned about the neighbors. That's very important to us. As far as parking goes, I believe, along with, I believe councilman Robson also said that our development actually creates less of a parking issue. With parking in the driveway and in the garage potentially, there is no parking sign on our side of the street. So I believe with the units that we construct, the parking will be overall better than, than it is currently right now, in, in our opinion.
But we're losing parking spots there for the DPW, though residents have been parking at the end of the street, and that's going to be blocked off. So that, that's not your, that doesn't have to do with your project, but it is going to be tighter.
On behalf of my project, though, so what we're creating, I believe it has a better parking standpoint than what is currently there now. As far as DPW goes, I can't comment on that. And as far as material goes, absolutely. It, as long as we're not making any shortcuts with material, and we feel that it is good for the area, for the block, for the community, then we're always willing to work with everyone involved. That, you know, generally, we're using more expensive material, expensive material than the typical development. I mean, our whole goal, again, we're selling, our plan is to sell these. I mean, we, we want to have these things last a long time. We don't want a lot of exterior maintenance. We take all that into consideration when we're doing our project. So absolutely, we, we would love to, to talk to everyone regarding that.
Great. And then my last question is, if your plan is to sell them, they'll be condos. I'm assuming they'll, it'll be a kind of a minimum association. Who will operate that? Who will be the condo manager? Is that through your GSR properties or?
So the condo doc attorney. No, so the condo doc attorney, um, will lay that out in the condo docs. Um, and we're not finished with that yet. It'll, it will be a third-party manager. Someone that, someone that's already currently managing other associations, most likely. It's a small enough complex to where a member of the purchasing unit, so whoever buys one of the units can manage it themselves. Uh, it will all be laid out in the condo docs though. So we haven't made a hundred percent determination on that as of yet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I, um, any, anybody else? Council member Hodges?
Thank you, Mayor Danner. I have nothing to add. I think this has been good discussion. Looking forward to the planning commission and assuming we can't work in your Huntington Beach ideas a requirement, I'd be happy to, um, make a motion to approve.
Is there support for that motion?
Or court?
Um, any discussion, further discussion? Call the roll, please. This is to
Council member Rayland?
Let me, let me make it clear. This is to approve the variance as presented. Um, perhaps we could add some language to this to make it clear why we're approving it. Um, and I'll, I'll ask, uh, council member Hodges to consider some recommendations from the city attorney if necessary. Uh, but it's important in this, this case to identify, uh, the special nature of the, uh, of the property, uh, the relationship to the commercial property, things of that nature, which makes this parcel unique, uh, from other parcels in the city. Uh, so that, uh, what we decide on the variance is, uh, applicable to this parcel and not to others, uh, because of its unique nature.
And just one more thing I would add to that. I think we need to make sure that the motion, we, we make it clear that the variance is contingent upon planning commission approval. I think it should reference the fact that that planning commission approval is still required, um, per the ordinance. And then I would, um, for the purposes of the minutes, because it is important with these ZBA, um, issues that we have, approvals and denials with some, uh, probably more additional factual backup or support than we traditionally would on a motion. So the language I would suggest is, um, that, uh, the requested variance does not, um, uh, or denial of the variance would unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for the permitted purpose or for this development. That, uh, the grant of the variance would, um, provide justice for the applicant, but also to the other property owners in the district, um, and the neighborhood. Um, and that, uh, this relief that is being granted, uh, meets with the spirit of the ordinance and the public safety and welfare, uh, thereby related. And that, it all sounds kind of silly, but those are the statutory checkmarks for approval and denial of the ZBA ordinance.
That's for Hodges. Did you follow all that?
Yes. Did you want me to attempt to capture that? So it's official or?
I think, I think it's in the record. You could probably agree with the language.
Yes, I would support that language and thank you to city attorney Howlett for outlining it as such.
Okay, uh, is, is the second, uh, council member, uh, Rowan, I think you had the second?
Yeah, I approve. Thank you.
Okay. Anything further before we call the roll?
Just to clarify.
Member Rayland?
What? Wait a minute. Hold on. Uh, we have one clarification question and discussion. Council member McConnell.
Yep, sorry about that. I just wanted to make sure that we had the contingency language is, this was, because I didn't hear him read that part. So I just want to make sure that was included.
That, that should be included as well, correct?
Okay, thank you.
I believe we're all in agreement. Okay, good. Uh, call the roll, please.
Council member Rayland?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Luet?
Yes.
And Mayor Danner?
Uh, yes, uh, motion passes, uh, the variance is granted. Um, and we all look forward to the, uh, planning commission discussion on April 21st. I would like to, uh, thank Mr. Inger and his, uh, team, uh, for, uh, uh, for their investment in our city and, uh, following our processes.
Thank you as well.
We all appreciate it.
Everyone. Thank you. Have a great night.
Have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Night now.
Good night.
Um, we continue, uh, just to, uh, our, our zoning board of appeals session with a, a second, um, variance request. Uh, this is a modification of, uh, uh, variance request that council, or I'm sorry, that zoning board of appeals has seen twice before. And I'll, excuse me, ask the city manager to, uh, introduce it.
Uh, yes, so thank you, Mayor Danner. Um, so before you tonight, as the zoning board of appeals is the, uh, Mr. Richard Tepper, um, who is requesting a variance for 1,200 Devonshire. And I would ask that Mr. Uh, Ron Supel, building official, please read, uh, the summary.
Yes, uh, Mayor Danner and, uh, ZBA board. This is a, uh, zoning board of appeals for 1,200, uh, Devonshire. This is the, uh, third appeal. And, uh, they have reworked the, uh, structural, uh, structure sever, several times. And the resident wishes to erect now a 1,417 square foot addition to the existing 35 five-square-foot addition, 3,500, 3,005 square-foot addition home. The addition will be a single-story addition behind the garages. It is, it is not defined on the revised drawing what the interior details of the addition will be. But the new addition will not meet the City of Gross Point Park zoning requirements, Article X, Schedule of Regulations RA, which requires a rear yard setback of 30 feet and a side yard setback of 10 feet 8 inches. The new addition will be and have a rear yard setback of 19 feet and a side yard setback of 6 feet 5 inches and 27 feet 5 and 5 inches respectively. So basically, the rear yard setback is not meeting our schedule of regulations of 30 feet. And one side, it appears, is not making the 10 feet 8-inch setback. So we have two sides of, or two areas of concern. One is the rear yard setback and two is one side yard setback. And the applicant wishes to erect the structure with those variances or new variances in place and the new drawings that have been presented to us.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mr. Supel. Is the, uh, petitioner present and would they like to, uh, address zoning board of appeals?
Yeah, Mayor Danner, this is Richard Tepper. Thanks, council, for, uh, reviewing my, uh, application. Um, as Ron had mentioned, my latest, uh, proposal is, uh, is significantly smaller than, um, than the last one, uh, and the subsequent one prior to that one. Overall, I'm about 33% smaller, um, than the original layout that I had submitted. Um, basically, the layout includes about 750 square feet of living space and about 530 feet of, of garage space, two-car garage. So really, the living space is quite small. It's only 750 square feet. Um, I sho-, you know, I, I took all the feedback that I received from the prior meetings and really consolidated the design as small as, is, is possible. And this is the, this is the proposal I'd like to submit to you for your approval. Um, one thing I want to mention is, you know, if, um, one of the other options that I considered too is to do a detached garage. Um, however, detached garage would result in the, in the structure being about three feet from the rear and side setback of my existing property. So if you look in Gross Point Park, there's several garages that are built this way. They're about three feet from the property line. Um, in doing so, this would make the condition for my neighbors actually worse than what I'm proposing. So that's why I'm, I'm making this proposal to try to avoid doing a detached garage. And obviously detached garage, you know, you don't have the nice integration to do with, with an attached garage and attached dwelling. Um, so that, that's kind of why I'm trying to avoid that solution. Um, regarding drainage, there were some drainage questions last time and I spoke extensively with Ron Supel. And, you know, we feel that, um, that the drainage part of it can be easily engineered, uh, shouldn't be a, shouldn't be a, uh, a big, a big issue to, to resolve. So just wanted to mention that as well.
Okay, thank you. Um, I believe in our package, uh, city manager, we had three written uh, comments from neighbors. Uh, were there any others that we missed, uh, in our package?
No, Mayor Danner, uh, there were three, uh, comments in your packet. That's correct.
I have a comment.
Well, now we'll, we're going to move on to, uh, I'm sorry, we're going to move from the written comments, uh, to, uh, to verbal comments. And, um, I'll ask, uh, Leah to manage that process. So I'll ask, uh, anyone that wishes to comment on this petition to use the hand raise function and, uh, uh, Leah will admit you to the, uh, discussion, uh, in turn.
Um, thank you, Mayor Danner. So the first person is Anna. So I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself. And then please state your, um, full name and address for the record. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Anna Signarino, 12, 1220 Whittier. The folks at 1,200 Devonshire are begging the city council to allow them to build an addition onto their house. The issue is basically that the addition is too close to the property line. Okay, but it's not going to hurt anyone. And city ordinance get ignored and changed all the time. Exceptions are always made or often made. So take, for example, when the city ordinance prohibiting dogs from entering the parks was violated years ago. And then last year in March, you finally changed the ordinance so the dog park project can move forward. And the police allowed the owner of the Point Hardware to have his dogs offleash in the city property because he owns the entire block, knowing that it violates the city ordinance. And the city requires the dog owners to have their pets under control. But one park resident at Patterson allowed her dog to jump on the back.
I'm sorry, if you could keep your, I'm sorry, could you keep your comments relative to the variance request itself?
What, what I'm saying is that city ordinance are violated, ignored, or changed. So 1,200 Devonshire is too close to the property line and that might violate the city ordinance. I say let it go and give them an exception. Nobody's complaining about it, except maybe their immediate neighbors. But it's on their property and it's not going to hurt anyone. So let's move forward with it. You know, we, we've got other issues going on. It's not a big deal. We know that those folks, um, on Devonshire will use the highest quality materials. It's going to tie in seamlessly, seamlessly into the existing home. And it's going to be beautiful. It's going to raise their property taxes and bring in more revenue to the city. And these folks are good people on Devonshire. These are the kind of people that we as a city want to retain. They can easily take their money and leave Gross Point Park and we could be stuck with people who don't take care of the property the way that they do. And they've lived here for 25 years. They're exceptional residents and homeowners and they want an addition. So really, what is there to consider? My point is, if you can have dog owners and give them exclusive rights to Patterson Park, disrupt, disrupting and annoying the neighbors and all park users.
I, I believe you're off point again.
No, you know what? There's a lot of points with this. What I'm saying is that if we allow dogs into the parks and violating the city ordinances, then surely we can allow 1,200 Devonshire to have an addition onto the park. Because it's really not that big of a deal. What we should be doing is thanking these folks for keeping up their property, making it look beautiful and wanting to stay in Gross Point Park. They're spending their money here when they could be going somewhere else. But maybe the addition is a little bit too close to the property line. Who cares? Nobody cares. It's not hurting anyone. That's all I have to say about 1,200 Devonshire.
Okay, thank you. Um, do we have other, uh, verbal comments?
Yes, we do, Mayor Danner. But before we continue, I just want to confirm that, um, every time we've done a zoning board of appeals hearing in the past on Zoom, we have not had timed comments. And I'm assuming that that is still the case.
Yeah, that's generally the case.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that. Thank you. Um, the next person in the queue is Kay.
Implement it someday, but hopefully not.
Okay, thank you. Um, the next person in the queue is Kay. I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself. And please state your full name and address. Go ahead.
Kay Agnew, 821 Whittier in Gross Point Park. And I, I just have to say that the Teppers have done such a wonderful job of restoring the home that, that they have. And when you look at the plans, if, if you, if they're allowed to do this and somebody drove by this house the way that they're planning to do it five years from now that had never seen it before, it would, it's, it fits seamlessly with the architecture and everything they've done in restoring it has kept all the architectural integrity along with the new addition, which certainly fits right in there with the house. So I really do hope that the, the council will, um, take a look at allowing, uh, uh, variance for them to be able to really add such a nice addition to the house, which is way better than having a, a detached garage with an apartment over it. So I hope you'll, you'll give that some good thought.
Thank you. More comment?
Yes. Um, the next person is, um, C Stafford. So I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself. Okay, and, um, please state your full name and address. Go ahead.
Uh, my name is, uh, Craig Stafford. I live at 1,232 Devonshire and I live three doors down from the Teppers. And, um, I have reviewed their plans and drawings and everything looks very nice as they always do with their homes. Um, it's very thoughtful and, uh, will look, look great in the community. So I would hope that, uh, the city council could, uh, see to approve the variance. Um, everything they've done over the years, I've been here for 17 years and they've done everything. It's top-notch and high-quality. So I think that, uh, approving what they want to do would be a, a great idea for the city. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Leah?
Okay, and, um, so I have a user by iPhone, so I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself.
Hello, Ms. Leah, is this me or you?
Yes, um, so it's your full name and your address. Please go ahead.
Yes, uh, Dick Schroeder, 700 Black Lake Point. Uh, I had the good fortune of working with, um, Dr. Tepper for well over 20 years. And I'm pretty sure if she does everything like she did at work, this place will not be a good addition. It'll be meticulous, well-done, perfect addition to Gross Point Park. Thank you very much.
Um, Mayor Danner, I don't have any further, um, verbal comment.
Hello, excuse me. Excuse me. I, I can't, I'm, my name is Mary Ann Nelson and, um, I'm sorry, I couldn't get my screen to do the raise hand thing.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
Sorry, I had just a couple of concerns.
If you could introduce yourself again and your address, please.
I'm Mary Ann Nelson. I'm at 1,230 Buckingham. And first, I, and I hit, lastly said, I have a couple of concerns. First of all, um, although I, in the past, when he had, Mr. Tepper requested the other two variances, I was notified by mail. But with this, uh, variance request, I never received any mailing about it. I, it called the, the, uh, building department and they assured me that they did mail it out. My neighbors didn't get it, get, uh, notified either. And I'm thinking that it's a problem with the Gross Point mail. I know there's many times, many days, like last week, I didn't get mail for a whole week. So I know that's another issue. But yet it does impact this because it was only through happenstance that I became aware of this new, uh, variance request. Um, another thing that, I don't know, maybe I have it wrong, but Mr. Supel said that, um, that it was a one-story ver, uh, a new addition. But when I looked at the plans that, that I finally discovered, and it is a two-story addition, I think. The, the, uh, second story has been reduced in size, as is the first story, but I think it's still a two-story addition, but um, I, correct me if I'm wrong on that. Now, I did submit a letter, but I don't know if it was under consideration because I submitted it late. Because as I said, I never got notified by this. So I will just kind of, um, summarize, and I, and I did get a response. summarize. And I did get a response from two of the council members that did receive my letter. So I'm not sure if my letter will actually be part of this discussion. But so I will just kind of briefly go through what I said in the letter.
Ms. Nelson, just so you know, it was part of our, it was part of our package, but you can feel free to highlight some of the key points. So council has seen it.
Okay, okay, thank you. I appreciate that because I know that it was a little bit late. I oppose this variance and I understand what the previous people have said, that Mr. Tepper does take good care of his property. And I have been in the neighborhood for a long time, and I've seen his house really shine and look good. But I still maintain that the structure is too big. I think Birmingham went through a time period where they were building big houses and additions on smaller lots. And I don't want our neighborhood to look like that. This is smaller than his first and second request of a variance, but it's still a large, large area. For instance, the existing garage is 525 square foot. No, I'm sorry, that would be the new garage would be 525 square foot. And it's not connected, would not be connected to the existing three-car garage, which is, it was a little uncertain between 507 and 537 square feet. So it's building a huge garage that's not attached to the existing garage. It's attached to the living space. But the living space is only 750, while the new garage is actually more than two-thirds the size of living space. Now, when I spoke, when I went to the city hall and looked at the plans for the first variance, and I was talking with the lady behind the counter, she said that it was supposedly going to be built for aging parents, but if that's the issue, to build it is for aging parents who have mobility issues, well, this is very admirable. Aging people often lose the ability to drive and may not need this huge garage that will extend close to the line on Churchill. The second, in addition, the living space has no access to the existing home. You have to go outside to get the new addition, which makes it more like like a new residence rather than an addition. It's not attached on the first floor at all. Well, I mean, it's attached, but there's no entrance from the first floor, from the existing residence to the new addition. In the second floor, it looks like the new addition would be maybe an enlargement of an existing second-floor playroom. But it wasn't very clear to me exactly how that would work. So now I would not be opposed to a modest addition that met the shared needs of their family, but not to build a second residence that's simply attached to the first residence by an existing garage wall. So I still have the same objections to the plan that I had as to the prior plans. Number one, it's too big and it's less an addition than it is a second residence. And two, when aging parents are no longer in the picture, what will the owners decide to do with this second residence? And number three, this project opens the door to changing the nature and appearance of our residential streets. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Denner, can I just make a couple of comments about?
Sure.
This is Nelson's comments. Yeah, regarding the size, yeah, the size has been reduced to just under 20, 22.9% of the property area, okay? The actual allowable usage area per Gross Point Parks ordinance is 35%. So I'm way underneath the 35% usage allotment. So I just wanted to comment on that. So it's not a Bigfoot home. The problem with how my house is designed is that it's, the location on the property itself, since I'm on a corner, the setback on the Churchill side is considered a front yard. So I have a 50-foot setback on the Churchill side and also a 50-foot setback from Devonshire. I'm kind of penalized from that standpoint. If you look at multiple homes along Churchill, there's other homes that are much, much closer to Churchill than my home. And that's, that's really the problem with the setbacks on my property. And that's why, you know, that's why I'm seeking the variance because of that. And regarding the addition, it's a single story. I mean, it's a single story with a hip roof on it. So it'll be the same elevation as my existing garage.
Okay, thank you. Leah, do we have additional verbal comment?
No, Mayor Denner, I don't have, unless there's someone else who can't use the star nine or the raise hand function that I was unaware of, I apologize, Ms. Nelson. I don't have anyone else in the queue for public comment.
Okay, thank you. Now I'll open it up to council for comment and questions. Council? Councilmember Reed?
Thank you, Mayor Denner. So, you know, yes, it's a beautiful addition. I agree, and it's a beautiful home. But what is the zoning board of appeals? We are asked to consider, this is a non-use or dimensional variance. And the standard for granting the variance is very specific. There has to be the existence of a practical difficulty, which which would involve special or unique conditions and circumstances peculiar to the land structure or building involved, and not generally applicable to other land structures or buildings in the same district. And that is not the case with this particular proposed addition. And the, you know, once, if the variance is granted, it runs with the land. Some of the, I mean, one of the examples, I think, in recent memory that we could speak to was the variance we granted on Berkshire and Jefferson for the fence. But you know, there's nothing unique about, other than this is a corner lot, but you know, every, every block has four corner lots, right? So that's not unique. It's not a special circumstance. And you know, Ms. Nelson, you know, did, did raise some valid points. And that is, you know, I think especially in this economy, with housing values increase, it's much easier just to build on to your house. I mean, you'll make money selling your house, but then you have to turn around and buy another house. So if we grant this variance, there's nothing, you know, other residents are going to be asking the same, for the same types of variances to add on additions. And if they don't comply, we, we won't have a good reason to deny those variances. I don't think we want to create that kind of density in, in the city. I mean, unfortunately, we are dealing with an older housing stock. And many of the lots and the homes in, in our beautiful city were not, you know, they're 100 years old. They weren't necessarily, you know, thought, thought in their design process for 21st century living. But that's true for most of the properties here. So I mean, I would encourage the Teppers to, you know, to come up with a design that doesn't require a variance. And then we wouldn't even be here. Excuse me.
Sorry, if you look at, I just want to interject. If you look at page one of my layout, it shows, it shows the current variance requirements or the current setbacks. My house was built 1926, so I exceed the, I exceed the current setbacks as it is today. So somewhere after 1926, the setbacks were changed. So that's what makes my kind of construction unique is that I'm already, you know, even if I were to hang a mailbox on the side of my house, I'm outside of the, of the required setbacks. I'm only the second owner of this house. So my architect tried to make that clear on the layout there.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Reed, are you, are you finished? Or do you want to, you have something?
And I guess I just have to cite, and one of, you know, what's in our packet is the, the neighbor that immediately behind has serious concerns both with drainage and with blocking of, well, with the, the use and enjoyment of his home by the structure. And I think we have to consider what's existing versus what is not existing. So I, we do have to take that into consideration. But really, for a non-use or dimensional variance, the standard's pretty clear. And that's what we should go by.
Okay, thank you. Other members of council? Councilmember Rowland?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to say thank you to Mr. and Mrs. Tepper, Dr. Tepper. This house is beautiful. Like we say, we drive by it a lot and see it. And then what you're doing is very honorable, trying to get a place for your parents. I'd like to just find, I don't know if we had the full recommendation from city administration, if I can hear that again, of what either Mr. Supro or Mr. Seisland thinks about the variance.
Having trouble with my mute today. Sorry about that, Councilmember Rayland. So Mr. Supple and I reviewed the, the variance and in regards to zoning, we would recommend denial based upon the requirements within our zoning.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other members of council? Councilmember Hodges?
Thank you, Mayor Denner. On that note, and the fact that the administration is recommending a denial, I'm wondering how close it is to the thresholds of where approval would be authorized or recommended by the administrative team. Given the changes that Mr. Tepper has made and that Conchetti suffered, he's put forth to try to get close enough to compliance to ensure approval. Has that brought him closer? Is there still quite, are we still pretty far away from the finish line, the goal line?
Oh, without coming on that directly, I would say that the principal variance issue that the immediate neighbor has expressed relates to the rear yard setback, which per the administration is required to be 30 feet for the rear yard. And the current plan is 19 feet. And that particular dimension, I believe, is the same dimension that has been in each of the, each of the proposals.
Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, you know, and I think I've mentioned this before, too. That only gets worse for my neighbors behind me if I have to, if I'm forced into putting up a detached garage. Because the detached garage would basically make that dimension go from 19 feet down to three feet. Be right along the property line, just like all the other detached garages are in Gross Point Park. I mean, I think that's a worse solution. I mean, it's a solution I can, you know, I can pursue, but it's one that I really don't want to because, you know, for all those reasons.
Yeah, I think that Mayor, Dr. Tepper, that may or may not be the correct quote of the rear yard setback for a garage. So I caution us to be careful that without the building department weighing in.
Mayor Denner, I understand that that is where he would be in compliance with the existing ordinance. But at what point would staff recommend approval of the variance? Or is that a binary, you know, choice of one or the other?
I think it's unfair to ask the staff to do, to say that because it's, it's it's, it's too speculative, I think. And I can see the city attorney may want to weigh in on that.
I would, I would caution against answering that as a hypothetical question. I think without the information in front of us, the public's opportunity to weigh in on any changes, et cetera, I don't think it's the right question to ask, to sort of guess it might be appropriate. It's, it's really the applicant's job to come up with the best alternative and present that case and not for the ZBA to sort of noodle about what it might or might not approve in a hypothetical circumstance.
Okay, other members of council? Is there a motion either way from council? Someone will have to be brave here. Councilmember Robson?
That the zoning variance be denied?
Is there support?
Support.
Okay, I hear support. Any further discussion? So in this case, a yes vote will be denial of the variance. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rayland?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
Fluet?
Yes.
And Mayor Denner?
Yes, the motion carries the variance request is denied by the zoning board of appeals. Dr. Tepper, thank you. But unfortunately, this one didn't pass either. With that, I will call a close to the zoning board of appeals session. And we, council will now.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
What are the next steps then? I mean, where do I go from here?
I would ask you to contact the administration to have that.
I mean, I've done that three times. And I followed, you know, the same instructions three times, getting smaller and, and taking the counsel from Mr. Ron Supple. And as I mentioned before, it's almost going to force me into doing the detached solution, which is not the good solution.
Again, that's, at this point, it would be speculative for any of us to try to design on the fly. So I, I am reluctant to answer that. I think at this point, it would be up to you to come up with something that is as close to meeting the setback requirements as possible. If the, and again, there'd be no guarantees if it would still require a variance. So I think that's where we're at. And unfortunately, that's what we're going to have to deal with going forward. With that, thank you, Doctor. The zoning board of appeals is now closed. We'll move on to the next item of regular business. We're reconvening as city council. And that is the rubbish services contract. And I'll ask the city manager to introduce that one.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Denner. Council, before you tonight, you have a summary memo from myself and a proposal from Green for Life Environmental for contract extension of rubbish. And so I'd like to read for you my summary in discussions with Green for Life and research with other communities. Just as a little background, City of Gross Point Park entered an agreement with then Rizzo Services for rubbish in 2011. The contract was for an initial five years, which expired in 2016, and subsequently renewed for additional five. Our current contract expires with Green for Life in September of 2021. GFL services 4701 homes and 109 businesses within the park. GFL is proposing the extension of our current agreement for five years with an additional five-year option mutually agreed upon by both parties. The first year in 2022 of mentally blended service would be 767 per month per home. Currently, our per-home price for year 10 of the current contract is $7.43. This rate includes household solid waste with disposal at the South McComb Disposal Authority in Warren. Bulk waste collection processing, yard waste collection and processing is from April 1st to December 15th. After the first year, annual increases would be with this proposal 2 and 1/4% on the contract anniversary dates for years two through five. The city and Green for Life were able to negotiate a lower yearly percentage increase, down from the 2 and 3/4 initially proposed by Green for Life. There are a couple of factors that lead to increases in per-year costs. Yard waste processing fees have increased with fewer sites to use. Equipment and maintenance increased due to changing federal regulations, unforeseen cost of fuel and speculation, and the tight labor market and shortage of CDL drivers keeps pushing the wages higher to hire and retain those drivers. As an example, in 2018, our neighbor Gross Point Woods previously had GFL as a service provider and was offered a contract extension by GFL to continue those services. They went out for bid. GFL was awarded the bid, and the rate increased even more than the initial cost proposals by GFL in their proposed contract extension. During conversation with other communities that went out to bid, all said four or five service providers showed up to the pre-bid meeting, but only two service providers submitted bids. And in all cases, GFL receives the low bid. Also, all believed had they been able to negotiate an extension, they would have fared better than going out to bid. GFL maintains a large market share in the region in southeastern Michigan. Additionally, our relationship with GFL has been largely positive. They're responsive to resident concerns and have historically been cooperative with the City of Gross Point Park. When the city had its large storm event in 2016, GFL provided additional trucks and worked overtime to remove trash from residents' curbs back during that event. Should council decide to not accept the proposed extension with GFL and the city goes out to bid, I have a concern and expect a significant increase in another provider or risk having a more costly contract likely again with GFL services. The city, as of our June 30th, 2020, 21 fiscal year, has about 159,000 roughly in fund reserves of the rubbish fund. And we are currently at our headly cap rate now for millage rates. So we can't extend our millage rate any higher. Before you is the financial impact of the monthly rates over the next five years proposed by Green for Life. For this fiscal year, rubbish collection costs are estimated at 444,480. And the new proposed deal, if struck by council, would increase that by roughly about almost $40,000 more per year. So certainly, there's a lot to digest. One thing I do want to add to my recommendation, certainly for you to consider, is with your consideration to authorize that contract extension with GFL upon approval and review by city attorney Jake Howlett. And so I definitely wanted to share this with you. There's a lot to digest. And if you have any comments or questions, I'd be happy to hear.
Okay. Perhaps, okay, go ahead, customer read.
Oh, thank you. Just for clarity, for the residents, these, these costs increase are all billed to the residents on their water bill, correct? City manager Seisland?
That is correct, Councilmember Reed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember McConnell?
So I just want to clarify, it's, is it a five-year or a 10-year extension? I've seen this five of five. Can you clarify that part for me?
Yeah, absolutely. So it's really a two-part proposal, Councilmember McConnell. If we sign on, we have a five-year extension that would enact right away. And then at the fifth year, we have the option of going ahead, you know, contingent upon your approval to go ahead and authorize that five years. So it's in two parts. And that was in the previous contract back in 2011 as well, which council did exercise back in 2016 for that five-year extension.
Gotcha, thank you for clarifying that. And then I had a couple of other questions. So you said that you spoke with other communities. Can you elaborate on which communities you spoke with? And then can you just clarify, did they indicate that GFL ultimately received the bid because they were the lowest offer? Or why did they say that they ended up proceeding with it?
Okay, so I talked with Chesterfield Township, Harper Woods, and Taylor regarding their experiences and Gross Point Woods as part of this summary. As I discussed, one of the things that some cities had pre-bid meetings when they had proposed going out for bid, a couple of companies came in and said, you know, City of X, we certainly would be interested in, you know, submitting a bid. The city would allow them to submit a bid. And this would have been a community, for example, that might have had Green for Life propose a contract extension. The community would go out for bid. And most often times, four out of five of those communities, GFL won the low bid of all the proposed bidders that would come back. And so you might have four or five bidders to come back. Green for Life is the low bid, and it would still be a higher price rather than the contract extension that was offered by Green for Life.
All right, that, those are the questions I had. I do think I want to reiterate my interest in us establishing an RFP process. It does feel like, I don't know, we're sort of in a catch-22 a bit here. So I just want to, you know, stress that I strongly urge us to get an RFP process in place. Thank you.
I'll weigh in briefly. Having been on council and now as mayor for quite a long time and during some earlier iterations of, of contracts for, for the trash collection. This is also always a difficult topic in terms of, of available vendors. And, and it's, it tends to be a, a small group of respondents and capable vendors, as the city manager indicated. And, and in my experience, my experience that the city manager mentioned, related to other communities in his recent research, is consistent with what I recall from previous iterations. And that is that negotiated extensions always won over, over bids, even though it's very, it's, it's kind of enticing and appealing to go out for bid. But given the, the very small number of qualified vendors, it, it doesn't turn out to be that advantageous to the, to the city. And these are, these companies by and large have achieved economies of scale by dominating a particular region that they're in. And that, that helps them keep their costs down. And in this case, GFL dominates this particular region and is a reason why their, their costs tend to come in as a low bid, even in a, in a bid process. So while it's always a bit uncomfortable to agree to, to, to just an extension without the bid process, in this particular case, I would concur with the administration's recommendation to, to approve the extension. Other members, Councilmember Fluid?
Thanks. I just wanted to clarify that this has nothing to do with our recycling contract. Is that correct?
That is correct, Councilmember Fluid.
Okay, because we had talked a couple of times about putting that out for bid. There have been so many anecdotes that residents have told about, you know, recycling being tossed in with the regular trash and a lot of issues there that need to be explored. And, you know, we had talked about ensuring that we were getting the best return on our, on our recycling expenses. And I thought that was something, is that coming up this year as well? Or do you know?
That will, Councilmember Fluid. So currently, I believe our current extension will expire in September, October of this year. So it's something that, and this is one of those contracts that's involved with Gross Point Shores, Gross Point Farms, Gross Point City, and it used to be Harper Woods, but no longer. And so the city managers are going to have to meet and work with GFL in regards to starting that process and updating you as the council on where we're at and, you know, receiving possible extensions or considering a bid process for the recycling. So to answer your question, yes, we'll be coming back to you later on this year.
Okay, because I think it's my understanding, we have a lot more issues with recycling than we do with rubbish. So I just wanted to clarify that those were two distinct contracts.
Anybody else on council? Councilmember Rowland?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Mr. Seisland. This is a pretty detailed report. It answered the questions I had before I read it. And I just want to say I'm going to follow your recommendation here. So I appreciate the thoroughness.
Okay.
Thank you.
If there's more, no further comments? Are there further comments? I'll put a motion on the floor if we can. I'll put a motion on the floor that we, that we accept the administration's recommendation and authorize a contract extension with GFL, subject to, to review by our city attorney.
Support.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rayland?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
Fluid?
Yes.
And Mayor Danner?
Yes, motion passes. The administration's authorized to pursue the extension. Okay, thank you. Good discussion, good, good presentation on, on that. We now go to council comment, new business. I have one that I'm going to, I wanted, I wanted to mention. And I think the city manager mentioned it earlier in the meeting. And I'm going to do it again. A couple of residents have reached out to me about a survey that seems to be going on around our city that's confusing as to whether it's authorized by the city. I want to make it clear that the city is not undertaking any, any survey of the nature that's been described by these residents to me and that our focus on community engagement and surveying right now has been through our master planning process. And whatever else is going on is outside the purview of the city and the administration. That's the only comment I had at this point. Other council, Councilmember Reed?
Yeah, just real quick, and Ms. Nelson touched on this during the zoning board of appeals, and that's the mail. I've talked to the city manager about that as well in relation to notices to residents because the mail is taking a long time. I have complained to our Congresswoman Brenda Lawrence and both of our senators. And I did hear from Senator Stabinoff's office. They're aware of it. It's not just us, it's not just Fox Creek, it's widespread. I encourage anyone and everyone to lodge those complaints. I think the more they hear from us, the better. And the more, the better chance that we get some resolution. I know for myself, I get mail maybe once a week or every two weeks. So I just wanted, because that, it is affecting, and I did share that with Stabinoff, Senator Stabinoff's staff member, that it's affecting city administration and our ability to notify residents as we're required to do so. So that's all.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember McConnell?
So, yes, I did the same thing, Councilmember Reed. It's a release to the mail. They sent me that same complaint form. We've been shared about it on social media, but they are really asking, stressing that to help impact. We need residents to file complaints. So if folks could take the initiative on that. And then I wanted to just, one, update on my initiative, the SustainGPP. As folks will recall, it was designed to learn the impact of COVID on businesses and residents. So we did a survey of businesses. As promised, those findings have been presented to DDA and Tifa via submission of the PowerPoint. We have also, I did a direct meeting with city manager Seisland to go over the survey findings to see if any of those things could be implemented. We also have created a Facebook page where we are promoting businesses. We did specialty weeks for different categories. And we've gotten really positive feedback from business owners about those. So for example, we did one around personal care, another one around retail. And the traffic's been great and preliminary, we got some good feedback. And hopefully, we are working on a few other activities. And I promised I'm staying in contact with the, with Joe from Belding Cleaners as it relates to the Business Association, as well as the city manager. So that again, we're trying our best not to step on toes and, and to be helpful with that effort. I am also very glad to hear that the city staff and law enforcement underwent the implicit bias training. I hope that, as aforementioned, this will continue to be ongoing, particularly as new people come on board. And I am also glad to hear that we have, again, a diverse field. And I look forward to that decision being made. And then lastly, I just wanted to say I also support or hope that we can offset the infrastructure costs with the federal funding as it relates to lead pipe replacement. And yes, if there's a way to find some dollars for some small business owners, particularly those who are not in the DDA and Tifa, that would be great as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of council? Councilmember Hodges?
Thank you, Mayor Danner. On the front of the U.S. Postal Service, now that those issues are ubiquitous and there's a toll that goes beyond a delayed card and periodical or, you know, real health and safety impacts our potential outcomes, such as medication delays, insurance policy cancellations, paychecks, and other significant items that for our residents are probably expecting us to leverage our voice. And I think we stand to have the best impact if we act as a body, you know, rather than individual members of the administration or council. So I would like to suggest that we take some action this evening that either directs the administration to act on our behalf or some sort of resolution form that really indicates our concern as a body and on behalf of our residents so that we can cause the, the greatest likelihood of some sort of positive and favorable outcome.
Okay, on that, on that point, I guess I'd like to get a sense of council. We're not in a position to vote on anything during this session. But if there's a sense of council that you would like the, something put together, I could, I could direct the administration to do so and then run it by us through email before it's sent. So I'd just like to get sense of council on whether you think that's, that's worthwhile since administration does have a limited amount of capacity. Mayor Protown?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, like, you know, it's been mentioned that the senators have been contacted, other officials have been contacted. I'm not going to say we're, we're getting a form letter in response. But really, enough is enough. We want to be sympathetic about COVID and lack of staffing. But it seems other post offices are doing better than others. And consistently, the council's getting complaints about poor postal service. So I think we have to have more of a human touch rather than letter. I think perhaps the city, the suggestion to be the city manager, perhaps meet with somebody from the post office. So I would suggest, and for the citizens that are listening, you might want to get involved too. The Detroit Postmaster is Don Dombrow, D-O-M-B-R-O-W. His address is 1401 West Fort Street, 10th floor, Detroit, Michigan, 48226. Phone number he can be reached at is 313-226-8315. That number might be, might not be his direct number, but they can forward your call to Mr. Dombrow. So in that context, too, my suggestion would be the city manager, at least meeting with him and discussing the difficulties that we're having.
Okay.
I like that approach.
Councilmember Reed likes that? Okay. Okay, with that, with that in mind, with this information, what I, what I'm going to work with Nick on is, with the city manager on, is making that contact with the postmaster. And I'd also suggest that we put the postmaster's contact information on our website under the topic of USPS delivery issues. And I think that there was a form, complaint form, that was also mentioned. If you could include a link to that form as well, that will facilitate our residents in being able to pursue, pursue this process.
And add, add our, our U.S. representatives or senators and, and Congresswoman Lawrence to that, too.
Okay, sounds good. I think that, I think that makes sense. And without this getting, I think that, that approach will, will at least help leverage our community. Okay, other topics, other comments? Councilmember Fluid?
I had a couple of things. First of all, I wanted to ask the city manager where we are with the parking study proposal that MKSK was going to put together that was going to be in addition to the, the master plan.
I just received it actually today.
Okay, so is that something we are going to be looking at and voting on in the future?
It's something that we'll have to look at. The price is pretty steep. So that's something that, you know, we'll have to certainly see if it'd be something that Tifa potentially would agree to, the DDA and the city council. And so certainly, that could be a further discussion.
Was it specifically for the Tifa or was it for the city as a whole?
For the city, for the city. So it was broken up into DDA and the Tifa.
It focuses, I understand it, it focused on our, on all of our commercial districts. Each one, each one, whether.
The MAC area.
Yeah, each one, each, each one of our major commercial, commercial district streets. It included each one of those, whether it was in the, whether the area was in the Tifa or the DDA or neither.
Okay, and the reason I'm asking, obviously, is because that came up at the, at the Tifa meeting. You know, there are some residents who were upset about the, the lack of a parking study being followed up on with the Tifa. And I know there, there are people who don't believe we need one. There are also residents who would like to see us go ahead and at least get some bids and some proposals for that study before we move forward with any other parking projects. So I think that's something we do need to talk about. I've emailed the city manager separately about some other questions I, I had about, you know, the specific lot that Tifa was discussing. But I did want to, did want to find out what the status was on that parking proposal being done in conjunction with the master plan. And we probably need to, I would suggest that if the parking proposal put forward by MKSK is too expensive that we think about putting out an RFP and getting other bids. If we've never had a parking study done in the city, then we should at least get an idea of, of what that would cost and what that would provide to us. The second thing I wanted to mention was I would also suggest that we post on the city's website contact information for the members of our commissions. Right now, if anyone wants to email Planning Commission, Tifa, DDA, all of that goes through the city manager, which I think is incredibly burdensome for him. And I, but I also think residents should have the opportunity, if they have, you know, input or issues or something that they want to bring to the attention of the Planning Commission or the Tifa or the DDA, they should have the opportunity to contact those bodies directly. So I would suggest that there be, ideally, that those people have city email addresses. But at a minimum, some sort of email contact should be available to residents.
But I'm, I'm not 100% sure. The city manager can clarify this. But my understanding was that similar to, to the city council at grosspointpark.org, which ends up going to all of us, that there's a similar facility for each of the, of those commissions and boards. Is that true?
Yes and no. So right now for Tifa, there is a Tifa and a DDA and a planning. Tifa and DDA go to Assistant to the Manager Smith right now, who then forwards it on to the chair and distributes it out to the board. Planning Commission, I believe that is also Leah, but I will have to double check with her, which goes through the same process of going through the chair and distribute it out to the rest.
Okay.
I, I, I feel very strongly that residents ought to be able to reach out to one or two or, you know, everyone on those bodies as a whole if they, if they choose to do that. I'm willing to hear from other members of city council, but I, I think, I think that contact information should be available.
Yeah, I think, my view on that is as long as that there, there is a route for the residents to get their, their questions and information routed to those bodies as described, that that is probably okay. These are, these are not elected officials. They did accept an appointment, but they're, they're volunteers from our community. And while they do have a public role, most of their activity is, is conducted only periodically, and they tend not to have, you know, for example, city emails. So I, I like the current process personally, but other members of council may feel differently. And those different bodies may feel differently. So I think, for example, Tifa and DDA, which are somewhat independent bodies, as is Planning Commission in many respects, should it have the opportunity to weigh in on that themselves? Since, since they do have the responsibility to manage their own, own affairs.
Yeah, if I can jump in on that, too. I, I, I think, Mr. Mayor, I think you're right there. There are residents. It'd be nice to be able to contact them. I, I think we should discuss a way that we can make that happen. If we do have Tifa at grosspointpark.org and that goes to their emails, and then maybe their replies have to get, I don't know if they want to share their personal emails is what I'm thinking of.
Right.
With residents. So I don't know if there's a way. I haven't thought about it deeply. But I, I do see the need to be able as a resident to contact my Tifa representatives and DDA representatives, especially since they're doing so much work in our neighborhoods. And they have, they have some free will that are affecting residents, like as, as recently as the last Tifa meeting, which was about the demo of a house on the block. So things like that, they need to hear about it directly. But I'm, I'm up for an open discussion, maybe in the next, next council meeting as an agenda item. Or we email city manager with our ideas in the meantime, how to make that come about. But I, I agree with you, Ms. Ms. Fluid, that it's necessary to be able to contact them. And it's, it's such a catch 22.
Yeah, okay, good. Any other topics?
The, the last thing I wanted to mention was that I was under the impression that, that someone was going to speak to this, but, but I will. Not so much in the last few days, but in the last month or so, we got a lot of emails with residents who were very upset that we are going to open the parks to non-residents and put low-income housing at the location of the Scott Center. And, you know, I answered each of those emails. I'm sure other people did as well. But I wanted to say publicly at the, at this meeting that neither one of those things is something that council is working on. And, you know, I think there are rumors in, in the city. There are always rumors in the city. But these two are hand in hand and seem to be going distributed to the same group of people. And so I wanted to speak to that specifically and let residents know that, that neither one of those things is something that is being worked on by anyone in council, to my knowledge. And I, I think we heard from some people who said they had never emailed council before, but they were very upset at the idea of either one of those things happening. And residents should be aware that it's not anything that they need to, to worry about.
Okay, thank you. Any, any other council comment? Councilmember Rowland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to reiterate what Councilmember Fluid mentioned about some rumors and some fake news going around. The third part of that is the donor policy. So I want to just share my thoughts on the donor policy that's been concerning some residents. This policy, in my eyes, is more for us on council to remain focused on the focus path, to have the right info as we accept proposals. I think the donors should be able to simply approach council with a project, and it's more on us and city administration to do our due diligence to ensure the project will move forward with proper management and knowing what the costs are to the residents. I think this would have helped a lot with that second theater that we had where the budget was about $500,000, and we ended up in putting about $250,000 of our residents' money. Per Dale himself said that to us. With a policy like this in place, council would have had more of the info they needed provided by administration to avoid such an overage in spending. A true estimate of construction would have been mandatory and showed actual possible costs. Many other cities have these type of policies in place for these reasons. Again, this is not to deter our donors, but for our city representatives to ensure we are making the best decisions for the residents. If anyone disagrees with me or has thoughts, please reach out to me. I'd love to discuss the important aspect to our fiduciary responsibility to the residents. Don't believe everything you hear. This is a good thing and really should not add efforts to any generous donor organization that really wants to add to our great city. I feel as elected officials, we are accountable for decision-making in the community's best interest, and all that information helps. Next, I just want to talk about the diversity and inclusive initiative we have. I was hoping it would be on the agenda this month, but I want to alert council that we're, I'm going to ask for it to be on the agenda next month. I'd like to ask everyone to prepare for a discussion around formalizing the initiative into a committee by adding it to that May agenda. Our next meeting, our next meeting is April 28th at 6:00 P.M. I'll share some more information via our website. And I want to thank the 70 or so folks that attended the last meeting, and we look to build off that momentum. Some of the tasks that we're working on include development of our community survey. And focus this month will be on some other cities that have similar initiatives and what positives they've seen come about, as well as some elderly programs that we're reaching out to. We're talking to the helm with Linda Altavilla. She's going to give us a presentation, as well as other elderly citizen and ADA leaders in our state to, to, to give presentations on what we can possibly do here for, for the, for that group of people. Lastly, I want to say thanks to Chad and Nick from Parks and Recreation for their efforts on helping my wife and I with a project that spurred from COVID lunching at Pierce. Many kids opt to go outside to eat their lunch as spacing is limited in the gym and the lunchroom at Pierce. But there are only spots that were spray painted on the ground to socially distance groups away. So we spoke with our daughter, who said it would be nice to have some tables. And my wife looked at me and said, could they use some from the park since they're all stacked up during that time? So working between Chad and Principal Durski, we couldn't determine it'd be a great idea. Chad delivered a few tables, I think six, to Pierce the week before spring break with Nick's help. And they'll remain, remain there until mid-May when the park opens up a bit more. So I wanted to say thanks to, to Chad and Nick for that. Thank you.
Okay, good. I want to make one thing clear about the diversity inclusion, inclusion ad hoc committee. The advisory committees of council are creatures that are, are, are created by the mayor. And then the mayor, mayor populates those, those entities. So we can have a discussion about it, but at the end of the day, perhaps Councilmember Rowland and I, you and I will have to, to talk about that further as to whether it should remain an ad hoc committee for a bit longer before we make that decision. And, and I think it's functioning quite well as an ad hoc committee at this point. I will say that I do have a concern that we have lots of standing committees. They tend to get a life of their own. And this is something that I think we want some focus on right now for sure. But I would like it to go, I'm inclined to like it to go a bit, a bit longer as an ad hoc committee, because I think you've been successful in the operation of it so far, so.
That sounds great. Thank you.
That's, that's what I'll say there. Other, other topics. Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Public comment, right?
Oh, I'm sorry. No adjourn. Oh, guys. Oh, my goodness. There's so much comment and discussion. Somebody's got to keep the mayor on track here. You are absolutely right. Somehow or another, I forgot we have public comment, and we still have, I think, a lot of people on this. I think we have some written comments to, to review as, as well as I suspect some people would like to make verbal comments. So I'll ask the administration to manage that. Thank you. I'm sorry about that. I apologize to all concerned.
Thank you, Mayor Denner. So council, I have four or three written comments. And so before you, I have Mr. Brian Vossberg. "On Sunday, I emailed you a copy of a petition signed by 13 neighbors who live in the 1100 block of Maryland opposing the Tifa Board's plans to demolish the home at 1166 Maryland to expand city-owned parking lots. As residents of the Tifa District, we pay into the Tifa the same as the businesses do. As the petition indicates, the Tifa Board had previously committed to performing a professional parking study before tearing down any more houses. At last week's Tuesdays, Tifa Board meeting, they suddenly changed course without considering any resident input, also something the Board had previously committed to as part of any parking studies. The parking lots near Kirchville are rarely, if ever, completely filled. I, along with my neighbors, oppose the continued demolition of homes without any knowledge of where parking is actually needed, when it is needed, and who needs to use it. We also oppose the conditions of the current lots in our block, which are inappropriately located, have no screening next to residential neighbors, shine headlights in our homes, create safety hazards to pedestrians, lack proper drainage, and look unprofessional and embarrassing with no landscape and gravel paving." Now, this comment comes from Mr. Greg Donnelly. "Why is the new DPW building at least not on today's agenda? The mayor, city manager, and attorney presented in December as urgent to move forward. Why isn't now urgent enough to have concerns raised months ago addressed and be on today's agenda? What is the DPW's construction schedule? When will city council hold specific votes regarding closure of vacation of several streets and alleys before construction starts on the DPW and Art Center? These votes are required per Section 76 of the city charter, as well as Chapter 21, Section 2167 of the city code. You will violate the charter by not holding these votes. What is an update on the search for a new public safety director not called specifically on this month's agenda? Finally, it's disheartening that the Tifa Board last week considered tearing down a home in Maryland south of Kirchville to make way for parking. Since I moved to GPP almost eight years ago, the city's torn down at least four perfectly good houses that families could be living in today, right around our Kirchville Business District. I live a few houses from Kirchville and walk this area almost daily. We don't have a parking capacity problem, but we do have a parking management problem that the current master planning process should address. Why tear down perfectly good homes when we don't fully understand the parking needs?" This comment comes from Mr. Martin Stager. "I received a phone call yesterday from someone conducting a survey on behalf of and paid for by quote, unquote, local community leaders about political issues in Gross Point Park. Lots of other people I know either received the same call or text messages asking them to take the survey. Judging by the tone of the questions and given that this is an election year in GPP, my instincts tell me that the survey was paid for by someone with a political agenda, most likely by a candidate for council. However, the caller stated that quote, unquote, local community leaders were behind the survey, so I want to know if the city or the council requested it. It would seem like a massive waste of money for the city to conduct a survey like this that probably costs thousands of dollars just weeks after the master plan survey ended. I realize the city usually ignores questions posed by residents during the public comment portion meetings. I'm hopeful the city will answer these one. Nevertheless, did the city request and pay for this political survey with their tax dollars? And if so, who approved it? Mayor Denner, those are my written public comments."
You're muted, Mr. Mayor.
There we go. Leah, thank you. Leah, do we have anybody in the queue?
Yes, Mayor Denner, thank you. I do have a couple of people in the queue. So I'm just going to share the three-minute timer. And then the first person in the queue is Ron. So I see that you've already unmuted yourself. If you can please just state your full name and city of residency, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Ron Porter. I live on Pemberton, Gross Point Park. And I don't often agree with Councilmember Hodges, but I always listen very carefully to what she says. And today, earlier in the meeting, brought, brought a great gem. And that is that either she, or maybe the city, is working with the URIF right now on a permanent solution for the Trombley School. And when she said that, it struck me that the city has just not learned one thing from the disaster of the development of the Art Center. By going around the residents and trying to engineer some private solution to Trombley School, you are just asking for a repeat of the dissension, the division, and frankly, the fiasco that the Art Center has become. City administration needs to immediately try to learn what the residents want to see happen with Trombley School. We don't need to know what the Cottons, or the URIF, or any of the big donors want to happen. We need to know what the city residents want to have happen to that property. We need to stop this closed-door, back-room dealing between the city and the big donors, the URIF, the Gross Point Foundation, and we need to stop it right now because you're going down a road that is going to lead you to a lot of litigation. Because we have learned our lessons from the, from the Art Center, and we're not going to let that happen again. We are going to demand input into what happens to that property. Period. End of story. You must recognize that. We are your bosses. The URIF is not your boss. And related to that, I note that we have no funding for the water project. We have to complete the improvement of our water system by law, but the city budget cannot accommodate it. So maybe we should go to our big donors and say, rather than spend a bunch of money creating some redundant community center, or whatever it is they're thinking about for Trombley School, why don't they pay for the water improvements? Surely, that would be much more of a benefit to all the residents of Gross Point Park than spending money on yet another redundant, unneeded community center, which I fear is what is being engineered for Trombley. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And the next person in the queue is Max. I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself. And please state your, yeah, please go ahead and state your full name and city of residency. Please go ahead.
Hi, good evening. Max, we're in Gross Point Park. I just wanted to take a moment and endorse what city manager Seisland had mentioned about the rubbish contract. I've been negotiating rubbish contracts, logistics, and waste management for multiple factories, both in the U.S. and Canada, for almost two decades. In the last few months, we've seen the most rapid price increases that I've ever seen in my professional career. The inflation right now that we're dealing with is extraordinary. So while some residents may have been concerned that it looks like we moved pretty quickly on this contract, I just want to assure you that we definitely saved a lot of money for the residents by doing so. Anyway, that's the only comment I had. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And the next person in the queue is iPhone, so I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself. And please state, yeah, please state your name and city of residency. Go ahead.
Hi, Ms. Leah. You can hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Please go ahead.
Hi, Dick Schroeder, 700 Block of Lake Point. I'm calling tonight regarding actions Councilmember Fluid took last week. I'm calling tonight regarding actions Councilmember Fluid took last week. The Girl's Point News published an online article about a very exciting children's bookstore coming to Kirchville. According to the article, the bookstore's name is Coryanders and is owned by members of the Cotton family. On March 18th, Dennis Lavissor posted this article to several Facebook sites that promote Gross Point Park. One of the sites is GPP City Advocates, run by Councilmember Fluid. Minutes after Mr. Lavissor posted the article, it was immediately removed. Mr. Lavissor again posted the article and approximate, and immediately the article was moved again. Councilmember Fluid needs to explain exactly why she did this, and more importantly, she needs to apologize to the Cotton family for doing so. How a park council member is allowed to behave this way towards any business in our community is unthinkable. It also is my understanding the Councilmember Fluid is on the Sustain GPP Committee led by Councilmember McConnell. The sole purpose of the council is to help promote and sustain our beloved GPP businesses. It is completely inappropriate for anyone to sit on this committee who is actively doing the opposite of what it was formed to do. Councilmember Fluid needs to step down from this committee immediately. The other statements that Councilmember Fluid made today about no discussions whatsoever about opening up the parks to outside residents, I have emails from city council members where they mentioned that they have had talks about being open to studying the idea, in the words Detroit Days bandied about. So when Councilmember Fluid says that nobody on the council has even thought about this, I've actually got emails saved. So if anybody needs to take a look at that, I'll be more than glad to share it with them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I respond to that, please?
If she's allowed to respond, am I?
Normally, we, we don't do responses.
I, I know that. So I will just say I am not an admin on that Facebook page and I did not remove any posts.
Okay, thank you. Continue?
The next person in the queue is Anna. I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself and please state your full name and city of residency for the record. Okay, Anna, I'm going to skip over you and go to the next person in the queue. So the next person is Jeff. I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself and state your name and city of residency for the record.
Hi, Dr. Jeff Greer, Gross Point Park. I just wanted to, to ask the city manager if he could please be more precise about the cost of a parking study. If, if I was listening correctly, I heard a word such as sizable or, you know, I heard an adjective, but I didn't hear, I didn't hear a specific number attached to that. I'd really like him to speak to that specific number because I'm curious if the cost of a parking study is more or less than the cost of purchasing a property and demolishing it and then losing that tax revenue over years. So, so Nick, I can, I can follow up with you on that, but if you could, if you could research that, I'd be really curious about those numbers. And that was my public comment for the day. Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you. Anna, I'm going to let you try to unmute yourself and make your comment one more time.
Thank you, Anna Segre. Thank you, Anna Segre, 1221 here. Are we going live?
I guess. Please go ahead.
Thank you. So I have three minutes uninterrupted by Mayor Denner or anybody else who wants to interrupt me. So now we're going to talk about ordinances and dogs and the adjacent neighbors. We're going to talk about 1200 Devonshire and how fantastic they are as community members and how we really don't want to lose them. 1231 Buckingham, they are not even close to where 1200 Devonshire is. So if you want to talk about the use and enjoyment of the adjacent neighbors and their property, they really should not even fall into place with 1200 Devonshire and what they want to do with their particular, very special plot of land. They could add on to the front of their property on Devonshire and that would destroy the entire look of that house. They're asking for a small addition. It's not a lot of space. Now they're going to be forced to have a detached garage, which is going to be more of an eyesore for the immediate neighbors. I know, because I have my neighbor's garage in my backyard and my three-car garage is in my neighbor's backyard. If you just allow them a little bit of space to build on and do whatever it is that they want to do with their property, it's not our business what they use that space for. I don't care, frankly. Nobody else should. And surely 1231 Buckingham has no business what people do in other people's houses. So now let's talk about the ordinances and how they are violated or ignored, right? So here's my one, Denner. Take for example, when the city ordinance prohibiting dogs from entering the parks was violated for years, and then last year in March, you finally changed the ordinance so the dog park project could move forward. Number two, the police allow the owner of Point Hardware to have his dogs off-leash on the city property because he owns the entire block, knowing it violates the city ordinance. The city requires dog owners to have their pets under control, but one park resident at Patterson allowed her dog to jump on the back of an unsuspecting child who was already traumatized from a recent dog attack, and there were no consequences. And last month, Chad Craig actually told his employees, the park gatekeepers, to disobey the new city ordinance just passed regarding dogs in the parks. You want to talk about city ordinances, the reality is, if you want to follow them, you can if it suits your interests, and if it doesn't, you just let it slide, depending on, on who it is. I got a call from city ordinance about my, my vehicle, licensed, registered and insured in my name, in my property in Gross Point Park, that had to be moved. Okay, city ordinance, no big deal. But nobody ever asked about the, the peaceful enjoyment of the folks on Grand Marais for their backyard with the dog park that's coming in, or the park users who want to enjoy Patterson Park with dogs barking and fornicating in the park. So let's talk about the ordinances.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Denner, I have no further public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you, Leah. That concludes public comment and non-agenda items. Again, I apologize for almost missing it, but fortunately I have a vigilant council that'll keep me on track. Now I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Come on.
Motion and support. Call roll, please.
Councilmember Raylan?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
McConnell?
I think she dropped off.
Okay. Hodges?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
Fluid?
Yes.
And Mayor Denner.
Yes, motion passes. We are adjourned. Counsel, I want to thank you. Good discussions this evening. And we squeaked in just under 10 o'clock, just before 10 o'clock. So that's our, that's, that's our new objective is to beat that. Probably not in May though, because I already know the agenda is going to be quite long in May. At any rate, have, have a great week and we'll see you all soon.
Good night.
Good night.
Thanks.